Everybody here?
I can hear.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and start our six o'clock meeting. For the council meeting on April the twenty first, whereby CMT, which is the Communications Media Technology, here at six o'clock in the evening, due to the C V O P D epidemic emergency, this meeting is held virtually by Communication Media Technology. Quoted as CMT, pursuant to the Executive Order two thousand and sixty nine issued by the Office of the Governor, Ron DeSantis on March twentieth, two thousand and twenty, municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a quorum in its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communications media technology such as telephonic or video conferencing. That's provided by Section one twenty, point fifty four, five, Section B, RF two, Florida statutes. Special instructions for the public to attend and provide the public comments during this meeting can be found at worldweb dot city of Cape Canaveral dot org forward slash government forward slash city departments forward slash city clerks, office public slash public records, laserfish, web link dot P H P. Please read the following instructions carefully if you want to attend or provide public comments on specific agenda items. Okay, we'll go ahead and have our roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Kellam?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison? Hello?
Here.
Councilmember Raymond?
Here.
All right, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Morrison, would you please lead us in the pledge tonight?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna stand as. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Okay, we have a roll call and I have a statement that I have to read. Statement of CMT proceedings. With this new technology, we will continue to evolve and get better as we go. As Chair, my job is to keep the agenda flowing while forwarding adequate public input. Before we get started, I want to restate what is written at the top of the agenda. If you are listening by phone, you will not be able to comment. You can only listen. If you want to comment, you need to go to the webinar link shown on the agenda. There are additional instructions in the agenda about how to raise your hand when you are on the webinar meeting. For the meeting to run efficiently, we should not talk over each other. And here are some guidelines. As the mayor and meeting chair, I will keep my microphone unmuted at all times to maintain the flow of the meeting. All other panelists, council members, and select city staff are to keep their microphones muted until called upon. When you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone. If the council member or panelist has their camera on and needs to speak out of sequence, please raise your hand. I will do my best to accommodate you at the time and the flow of the conversation allows. If you do not have a camera, please briefly unmute your microphone and get my attention. Cameras are preferred, and we do have cameras, so we shouldn't have any problems. Just raise your hand, and I'll try to recognize you as quick as we can. I do have a problem. Before I go farther, I just looked at my screen and I don't see Angela. She's over, I would assume, on the far right. But my icons have got her plugged out. Can I scroll those down out of the way? Daniel?
You can minimize that, Mayor Hoag.
Tell me how to do it so I don't lose it, because I don't see. Up at the top is a little bar, correct? That's.
Point, point at that bar, and if you click on the tiny little bar that says minimize, then it'll.
I just did. It blew everything off the screen.
Uh oh.
I have.
You're right, it does do that.
I connected to webinars.
So go down to your bar and see where it has that little blue icon. You can click on that.
I'm back to that, but I'm back to what I had before.
Okay, but next to that, you can, there are a couple of other options besides minimizing. You can view in window mode if you want to click that. Or you can actually drag. You can actually drag that rectangle around. So if you held your mouse down and just drag it over or down into the bottom.
I'm trying, but it's not moving. It's not moving. That's the one that has the camera, the mute button and all that.
Yeah, you should be able to move that down into, like, right next to the agenda.
I'm trying to move it, but it doesn't move.
Oh, darn.
Anyway, let me just say, I can't see Angela, but if Angela, if you just need to interrupt, go ahead and I'll try to recognize you, but just.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on. Okay, I got the last sentence about unmute your microphone and get my attention. Cameras are preferred. Either the city attorney or I will introduce each item. For each item, I will call each council member by name in alphabetical order to make their comments, and I shall speak last. And the order will be as Mayor Pro Tem Brown, Mayor Kellam, I mean, Mickey Kellam, Walt Morrison, and Councilmember Raymond, and myself. I will then ask the city attorney and then the interim city manager for their comments. I will speak, ask the organizer if there are any public comments. Once I have gone through the public comments, we will return to it again to the dais and will again ask each council member in the same order alphabetically for any final comments. This should help us reduce the amount of talking over each other. And then for public comments, I will ask staff if there are any previously submitted comments to be read into the record by staff. These would be comments received prior to four o'clock today, four P M. The city online forum, emails submitted to the public comments email address, or regular mail received at City Hall. Once all of these are read into the record by staff, I will ask staff if there are any webinar meeting viewers who wish to comment live during the meeting. If you are a webinar meeting viewer and you wish to comment live during the meeting, click on the hand icon near the upper right-hand corner of your screen. Ensure your microphone is turned on. Please be patient. If all works as we expect, staff will unmute your mic. And at the appropriate time, they will tell you that you are live and ask you to state your name, address, and then you can begin to speak. You will have three minutes to speak. Please use appropriate decorum. The council could then respond to your comments, and we will move on to the next commander until we have all been heard. Staff will not be monitoring the questions, functions of this remote meeting software. For each item, open up public participation. Staff, there are any previously submitted comments to this item? Staff, are there any online commentators who have indicated they would like to speak? And that's our method of how we will do our decorum for this council meeting. So we're gonna go ahead and begin our council meeting. We had roll calls, and we can go ahead and open up public participation to any item other than what's on the agenda if somebody wants to speak. Mr. Organizer?
Yes, sir. We had received two emails prior to the four P M deadline, and I'll put the first one up on the screen now. I believe Mia will be the one reading it into the record. Give me one moment, please.
This email is from a Mr. Brad Purvell, sent to our info at cityofcapecanaveral dot org. Subject four twenty one twenty for today's city council meeting. The date was today at nine thirty seven A M. Good morning. My question, comment is as follows. The south side and north side parking lots of the Little League baseball field has become beach parking every weekend, every space taken. We observe carloads, yes, of fishermen, okay, comma, bikes being unloaded, okay, comma, couples for walk, couples for a walk, okay. However, the majority of the cars are off. Chairs, blankets, coolers, wagons with kid toys, et cetera. And in parentheses, sunbathers obviously not okay as per rules. We live in Cape Canaveral. We wouldn't need to park in the new parking area. We would walk or ride our bikes to the beach. So my question is, how are you, we, enforcing our shelter-at-home program for the beach to keep us safe? Why can't our citizen patrol work on the weekends to enforce these new beach rules? You sent eighteen-plus emails to the community about the situation regarding COVID nineteen. Obviously, you want to keep us safe, and you communicate this well, so please do it completely. The solution is to close off all park parking except for two or three parking spaces for fishers, walkers, bikers. Trust me, that is enough based on observations with non-movable barriers. We know you want us to be safe. We want to be safe. Please help us be safe. Looking forward to your resolution and response sincerely, Brad Purvell. P S, and I do vote.
Okay. We don't have anything we can do on this other than advise staff to look into the problem and handle it as you need to handle that problem. Our other comment, you had two, did you say, Daniel?
The second one is on the screen, sir.
Okay, okay, I didn't see it. And Mia, are you gonna do the honors?
Yes, hold on just a second. Get my mouse to work, okay. This is from M. Smith. That's Smith, M E L nineteen sixty six at gmail dot com. It was sent Tuesday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty, at three thirty-two P M. To public comments, and the subject is council meeting four twenty one twenty twenty. Public participation. The citizens of Cape Canaveral are expected to follow the city ordinances. The members of the city council are expected to follow the city ordinances. There was a question at the special meeting about why council was not involved in the declaration of emergency. The mayor's answer was adequate until he offered, he has made other out the required council involvement multiple times. Mr. Mayor, will you please expand on how you disregard, how you're, on your disregard for the words in the ordinance and explain the other circumstances in which you unilaterally made a declaration without council involvement? In the same video, Mr. Mayor, you referred to this council as my council. Respectively, the council is not your council, rather, the elected representatives of the citizens of Cape Canaveral. In the special meeting on the fourteenth of April, the mayor stated more than once that there have been three, four, or five deaths in Cape Canaveral from COVID nineteen. What is the source of that information? Ms. Raymond declared, most people do not read, in support of her position on the five hundred dollar beach access parking fine. I find that statement just offensive and an insult to the citizens of Cape Canaveral. Would Ms. Raymond like to apologize or clarify her statement for the stupid and uninformed? Ms. Raymond also claims other cities use Cape Canaveral as an example of being responsible during this time. What cities, what venue, what real verifiable thing justifies your remark, Ms. Raymond? Thank you for your attention. Mel Smith, two eleven, Caroline, Cape Canaveral, and two hundred and fifty-eight words, Smith, Mel, nineteen sixty six at gmail dot com.
Okay, I was, I was gonna respond to one of those anyway during the meeting at some course in time, so I'll just do it now. It's appropriate, everybody. And Mrs. Raymond, I'll let you respond. To fir, my first item, the gentleman mentioned emergency declarations. Emergency declarations that I have done in the past, and probably every mayor preceding me has done, is during a hurricane, we are given the order to evacuate. And that order is usually given for one or two days or less sometimes. Depending on the location of the storm, the velocity of which that storm is moving, and the direction it's going, and that usually, like, coming to Cape Canaveral. The ones that we have, and the ones that I know, that I have signed, were directly coming to Cape Canaveral and, thank God, turned. But we, at that time, were ordered to evacuate immediately, and like, we had two days' notice, and that does not give you time at the time, but when all this took place, to set up a meeting. Today, we can set a meeting up in just virtually a couple hours, I guess, it takes to put it together if we get the notice. So those are the times that I was referring to that I signed a declaration. We were told to evacuate, evacuate Brevard County immediately. And those, those days, we didn't have time to set up meetings. The deaths that I was referring to, I did mention Cape Canaveral. I went back and looked at it. I was not, I was referring to two different items, I guess. At one time, we were talking about deaths, and we were talking about the number of cases. And there was, at that time, it changed from three deaths to five deaths in one day. And that's what I was referring to, was in Brevard County, not Cape Canaveral. And I did mention Cape Canaveral, and that's my mistake. And I did get a notice on an email for that, and I did respond back to that email and told that person on the email that my intention was, I was referring to the emails and the COVID notices that we get from our interim city manager, that those were Brevard County deaths. And I do apologize if I got anybody all excited it was in Cape Canaveral. So far, as far I know, we haven't had any in Cape Canaveral. That's my response to those two questions, sir. And hopefully, that answered your question. Mrs. Raymond, would you like to respond to the question?
I prefer talking to the person. They can call me. My telephone number is on all of my cards, and I will talk to you the way that you have a normal conversation. I believe that anyone could take sentences out of context, and I think that's what has happened in both of these cases. And I will explain in further detail. I think we have a lot more important things to talk about today than petty things such as this. Thank you.
Okay, all right, then we'll move on. Is there any other, Daniel, or was there any other thing? We only had two participants? For this?
Yes, sir. We had those two emails, and I'm currently scanning the attendee list to see if anybody has raised their hand. Give me one moment, please.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Raymond Osborne has his hand raised. So, Mr. Osborne, I will lower your hand, and I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes to speak. Mr. Osborne, you're on.
Okay, great, thank you. Good to see you guys again. Thank you for doing this. This is great for, to keep our government in motion here. I had a few questions, and I think you're doing a great job, you know, with the handouts about COVID. But my questions go a little bit deeper now, and it was mentioned something about, you know, we're seeing the numbers for cases in Brevard, but we're not seeing anything in Cape Canaveral. We're not seeing anything in our own backyard here. How many cases do we have? I wonder, maybe somebody could address this. How many cases do we have? Any other, you know, how many positive cases do we have? Do we have any traces going on? And hopefully, we don't have any deaths. Also, I was talking to an APRN two weeks ago from Health First, and she mentioned to me that this Abbott Laboratories has a five-minute test that we're in the works of being distributed throughout the United States to different communities. And I was wondering if anybody in the city has been on top of this to find out when these tests may arrive in our own area so we can do testing, because I think to get control of this epidemic, we really need to do some testing, not only for testing for people who have the virus, but even for the antibodies test too, so that, you know, we can plan around that. I know, you know, we're talking, the state is talking about opening up beaches, and I really think, and the big question is, well, what about the tests? You know, if we're gonna open up our economy, then we need to do testing. And I'm kind of appalled sometimes to go to different locations, and I see the retail workers there working without protection. You know, some stores are doing a very good job. One grocery store has their people using gloves, another store doesn't. You know, so I'm kind of a little concerned about that. I know that might be beyond the powers of what our city can do. But I think testing would help. I think testing would be a big help. And I wonder if our city can go beyond what the state is doing in conjunction with the state or parallel to the state, and see what we can do to get some of these five-minute Abbott Laboratories tests into the local area, and, you know, what kind of locations. Has the city discussed any of this at all with each other or in the planning with the city manager's office? So I'd be interested in hearing about that today, so one of your city council members would bring that up as a talking point, and I'd appreciate it. But thank you. Good to see you all again.
Mr. Morley, would you like to respond to how we get our information and what information we do get?
Yes, I'd like to defer to Melinda Huser. She's our incident commander for this, and she has that information. Melinda, are you there?
Give me one second while I unmute her. Melinda, you are on.
Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Raymond, for your question. As the incident commander for COVID nineteen and this infectious disease, we receive daily updates from the Department of Health, the Florida Department of Health. And I can provide you that email address on the side. But as of yesterday, there is two hundred and sixteen cases in Brevard County. And if you go to that website, there's a zip code search where you can put in our zip code, and it will tell you how many is inside our zip code range. And as of today, there's only, it says, less than five cases, which is, of course, one to five cases. We don't exactly know, just due to HIPAA and the regulations that govern that. But I'll be happy to provide you more information, sir.
Thank you, Melinda.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, Daniel, I assume that's it? You want to give us one more time?
It looks like Mr. Osborne has raised his hand again. Do you want me to unmute him?
Okay, go ahead, let him speak.
Okay, well, thank you for the response. Okay, thank you for the response, Commander. I was wondering about the Abbott Laboratories five-minute tests that were gonna be distributed to the community. Did that phase away, or is that on the way? Or is somebody keeping track of that? And, you know, also, the supply chains are gonna be important too. So I was wondering if you could speak to that for a minute too. Thank you for your previous answer. I didn't know that there were five cases here in Cape Canaveral. That's of interest. It would be also of interest to know generally, without giving their identification, what part of the city they're in. And I don't know if you're able to do that or not, but that, again, would be meaningful information. Thank you.
Sir, let me clarify that. There is less than five cases. There's a range that Department of Health provides, and it's basically less than five. So we don't know the exact number yet. And in reference to the tests, we currently attend meetings with the Brevard E O C, which is the Emergency Operations Center. They have a team, and they provide us any information that the Department of Health and the county has to give us. And they're right now looking into this matter, because this is a pretty new thing, these tests with antibodies and so forth. But the more that we find out, we put it in our updates in our emails, especially on social media, to inform the citizens.
Thank you, Melinda. And also, just a side note.
I'm sorry, Mayor Hoag, Angela has her hand up.
Oh, I can't see you. You're okay. I'm sorry, Angela. I just wanted to say.
Does the comment, in the Florida Today newspaper this morning, they said, one, comma, two cases. They do have Cape Canaveral listed, and that's what they did report in this morning's newspaper. Thank you.
But that area code also includes the port?
No. It said Cape Canaveral.
Well, I say the area code three oh, you know, two oh. When they report that, it could be three cases, four cases, whatever, it's also the port, port area, not just Canaveral. I don't really know how many. I know, I thought we had one or two in the fire department, but I'm not going there on how many numbers, because it changes every minute. Okay, anybody else? Daniel, now is that it? We can close out public participation?
I will give one last scan to make sure there are no other hands raised. Give me one second, please. No, sir, no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, council will close out public participation, and we'll bring it back to the dais. And our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have eight items showing, but item number seven has been pulled by Fire Chief Sergeant. So you have items one, two, three, four, five, six, and eight to bring a motion forward, or if somebody wants to pull any.
Forgive me, Mayor. Fire Chief's item is item number four.
Four, was it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did make, I looked at the wrong one. I had two notes made on my agenda. I'm sorry. Thanks for catching that, Todd. So we're pulling item number four, and we're gonna have one, three, one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight. Anybody here to remove any items? If not, we'll look for a motion. Who approved?
I make a motion that we accept consent agenda except for number four.
So a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kellam. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Brown and a second by Councilmember Kellam. Can we call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have ordinance oh two, two oh, two oh, amending chapter twenty-six. Second reading, Mr. Darganezy.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is second and final reading of ordinance number zero two dash twenty twenty, an ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending chapter twenty-six, elections of the Code of Ordinances, changing the qualifying period for candidates for the offices of mayor and city council to be consistent with the requirements of the Brevard County Supervisor of Elections, providing for the repeal of primary consistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability and an effective date. As you, as I indicated, this is second and final reading. There have been some changes to election laws that the supervisor of elections has to contend with with respect to mailed ballots. And that resulted in the last city special election, the city council adopting an emergency ordinance to modify the qualifying period. So candidates can qualify bef, in the proper time, so all of the, you know, the mail-in ballots can be printed and distributed to voters wherever the supervisor has to distribute them. So this is second and final reading of this ordinance, modifying the qualifying periods for the mayor and city council elections, consistent with the direction that we got from the supervisor of elections. There.
You're muted, Mayor. Mayor, you're muted.
We're gonna have a discussion, council? Anybody want to discuss this? We go to public hearing? No discussion? Okay, we'll open it to public hearing. Mr. Organizer, Daniel, do we have anybody that wants to comment on this?
Uh, as of 4:00 PM today, there were no emails regarding this item. Let me run down the list and see if anybody has their hand raised. Give me one moment, please. No hands raised at this time.
Okay, saying no public comment, we will close public hearing and come back to the dais and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, two thousand two, oh, I lost my, hold on. Ordinance, is it? No, it's resolution.
So ordinance zero-two-dash-twenty-twenty.
Yeah, that. Uh, I make a motion that we accept it on the second hearing.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Kellum and a second by Councilmember Raymond for ordinance two-dash-twenty-twenty. As written, accepted, motion made. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, thank you, Council. Now we'll move into items for discussion. Our first item, item number ten on the agenda is discuss the city manager's position as per Council's consensus on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty, and take any relevant action as advised by the city attorney. Council, I'm opening the floor to the council.
Who goes first?
Sorry?
Are we going in, Mr. Brown first?
We're gonna do, yes, we're gonna do alphabetical order. Like, I thought I gotta read it again. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, can everybody hear me? Yeah, I was contacted by, well, by two citizens of Cape Canaveral today, and their concern was that we are making this decision based solely on the recommendations of the staff of Cape Canaveral. And that they would hate to see this position decided based on the citizens, not the citizens, but the employees, because this is such an important position that it entails so much in future growth for the city. I have gone over Mr. Morley's resume, and I think that Mr. Morley is more than qualified to present, um, continue in the position that he's actively doing as interim. I just wanted to dispel the rumor that that is why this election is being made, based totally on the recommendation of the staff, and I don't think that that is true. I'll comment further after we go back to other council.
Okay. Ms. Kellum?
Um, I'm gonna pass right now and come back in a little bit with some questions.
Mr. Morrison? Okay, you'll pass. That's good. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a, this is definitely a, a big decision and Mayor Pro Tim Brown, I, I heard that as well. And, um, and I, and I don't think that's, that's the case. I, I agree with you and, and I think the council might largely agree as well. We certainly got a recommendation from the staff, which I appreciated. I think we're all making the decision at a broader set of, you know, reasons. And I think the big thing today is when this was first brought up, to have this meeting, you know, we had one council meeting, which we had to cancel, the, the March meeting, and we had a strategic meeting. And I, th- those were some of the comments that I made and said, let's, it'll be, we'll be in a much better spot after those two meetings to, you know, have strategic planning with all of the staff in one room, working together. And unfortunately, due to COVID, I don't think Todd ever wanted, or I wish that if one had one, I, I wouldn't want to be in any city manager's seat, let alone an interim city manager. But through this, I think that my, my biggest concern for today is to have a discussion is, is great, but this is a very big decision, like Mayor Pro Tim Brown said, and I think we all agree, arguably one of the biggest decisions we will make. And I, I wish, I hope that we can, you know, give the public an opportunity. I know we have, we're further ahead than a lot of cities, but, uh, public access is restricted, uh, to a certain level today. You know, if your comments don't come in before four, uh, you know, they don't have an opportunity to weigh in, for someone to be able to call in on the phone, uh, right now and leave a verbal comment live as we're talking about it. Um, I, I don't think it's possible, and I know we're getting there, but, uh, and then, you know, if somebody doesn't have internet access, um, it's very difficult for them to- it's challenges in the, the separation. The last city manager was just the nature and how fast it came up, and we had to do the add-on agenda. And as we all were in a very difficult spot, I felt that, you know, public notice is something moving forward that we can really make sure we do right, uh, in this particular situation. And so I just hope, and my comments on this is that we, um, potentially postpone this, um, or have the discussion, but really hold it, um, for a meeting once COVID is behind us, where, and our headspace isn't dealing with, uh, these other priorities. I think Todd, as the interim, has, um, taken the torch and he has done a good job through this. Uh, but I really want to be together with, with the council in the same room with all of you. It's a big decision, and I feel that, uh, if we can, if it's, if it's worth the time, we can come back to it. But, um, really, the main ones is public input is limited as of today. And I don't, you know, we're not voting on a, I think, we don't have a contract today or anything, but I know that there are pub, there are some comments from citizens that I think we all received in the emails about how we go about this. And I do want to, to weigh in the council and really consider the path forward, um, and involve the community, um, at optimal level, as much as we possibly can. And so today, if I had a request, it would be to, um, not get too deep into this until we can get this emergency behind us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Finished, Wes? That's it? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to Angela.
For once, I agree with Wes Morrison. I think that we should definitely have an extension. And I think that we can extend Todd Morley's interim manager position at this time. I think that I agree one hundred percent with Wes, that this needs to be taken very seriously. I feel that it is probably the most important decision we make as a city council, and we definitely want to be transparent, and we want to have the city residents talk about this. I have talked to a lot of city residents. I feel, and I told you right from the very beginning, that I object to the process. I feel that we should have some type of a limited search locally. I would like to see, I, I'm glad that I was able to see Todd's resume, and I don't really want to get into it right now either. I would rather hold my comments. I've given it a lot of thought. I have come up with a chart, a workable chart for me. And as I said, I've talked to a lot of residents about it, and I really believe that we need to extend the interim position at this time and look at the process. I feel that as a professional organization, we need to act like professionals, and we need to have some type of a local search. It doesn't have to be a national search. It can't be a nat- national search at this time. But that's my suggestion, is an extension. Thank you.
Okay, everybody's had a chance. Other than Ms. Kellum, she wanted to hold off, and now I'll come back to Ms. Kellum.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think that right now, under this civil emergency that we're all in, is not the right time to make a decision without more public participation. I think Todd's doing an excellent job. I think if, if Ms., Ms. Angela wants to, um, put the job out there, that maybe we should discuss that and not make Todd wait again after the civil emergency is over, and then we're gonna put the, put the job out, um, for, you know, other people. Um, I, I, I think that Todd is, is doing a wonderful job. I think he's good for the position. I would like more public participation before we make this decision. But I don't think it's fair to Todd to wait till the civil emergency is over and then put the job out for other, uh, re, you know, resumes or other people that wanted the job. I think he's waited long enough. He's got us through this. I just don't think that right now is the time to make a, uh, this decision during a civil emergency. Um, and that's, I, I know, the other thing was, I talked to Todd today, and I would like, maybe Anthony can get us some samples of, um, contracts with, uh, city managers, so we can be looking those over as well as, um, you know, seeing what we, because I think the council should have input on the contract for Todd as well. And, um, by May, I hope that we could make a decision. Hopefully, we'll be out of the civil emergency. Maybe by May, we could, um, hire him or, um, move forward on, on this. But right now, I don't think that we should make this call right now. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have much to comment on. I've known Todd since he started working here. And, uh, Todd's held almost every position in the city, other than financing and HR. He's overseeing a lot of the Public Works events. He's managed the City Hall. He's involved in the, the new recreational facility, the transformation of that. And, uh, I, you know that, I think since Todd's just been here, I've probably received more emails than I've ever gotten in my life from city management. And I've he, I've been through all of them, but, uh, he's done a great job. I don't have a problem. And I, uh, kind of know there's a lot of public input to be done. I've had a lot of people, both sides, you know, I've gotten emails, both sides. And, yeah, I think, uh, with this epidemic and this going on, I think, uh, probably, maybe with, I'm hearing that everybody wants to just wait, so I'm patient. I'll wait. Uh, I know, Mr. Brown, I don't know what your idea was for tonight, but it looks like we, we have three members that would rather wait until the COVID incident-
Yeah, I have-
-chambers, so we'll just do it that way, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I, I have no, I have no issues with it. I think Todd's doing an excellent job, and I will definitely, um, go to defer and to this COVID, um, situation is over. I have no issues with that at all.
So we're gonna have, hopefully, a meeting in May. That's when we'll all be presently together in the chambers, and we can get public input and go through it that night or decide what we want to do and go forth. Mr. Garganese, did you have anything you want to advise tonight, or is we headed the right direction?
I think you are, Mayor. Basically, we just needed to get some direction, um, since the last direction that was given by council to, to place this item on the agenda for discussion. So, you know, no action is required this evening. Um, the only clarification that I would ask is, I, I've heard council members indicate they want to defer until the COVID-19 emergency is over. And then I just heard you mention that maybe we would be meeting in person again on the nineteen, or in May. I'm not sure, um, whether the COVID-19 emergency will be over or not by May. So if you can just clarify, you want this on the agenda for May, or do you want this on the agenda when the COVID-19 emergency is over?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm at just basically when we can physically all get together again. Not a, I don't know when that's gonna be, but when the COVID is over with, I guess that's when we're gonna get together. It might not be May, it might be August. I don't know when it is, but whenever, whenever the COVID is over with, is that everybody's opinion of what we're talking, trying to put together? Just wave your hands. We'll know. Nikki, or, um, Angela, I can't see you. Are you okay with that? That's what you indicated?
Yes, she waved her hand, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then we'll just, uh, put this off until we meet physically when the COVID. Uh, Ms. Kellum, do you want to speak again? You're muted.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, um, you know, that we agree that we're gonna wait till the COVID-19 is progressively, hopefully, we'll be able to meet. But are we going to then put the job out for other people to apply, or are we just, I don't think it's fair to Todd to keep him waiting. Um-
Well, that's what, uh, I got an indication that we're gonna be meeting and decide what we're gonna do that night, is what I've been hearing from the array of, I've heard that, uh, people are behind Todd, and I heard people want to maybe go out and look, and I've heard people that are kind of undecided.
So we're gonna wait till May, and then we're gonna discuss again whether we're gonna go out and look for other people? Is that what I'm understanding?
Um, I'm hearing, here's what I'm understanding, that the council, the majority of the council has stated, they want to wait until we can physically get together and have public input at a meeting where they are there physically to talk. That's what I got from the conversations I heard. And then we're gonna have this meeting when the COVID is lifted and we can physically get together. That may be May, I don't know. I said May, hopefully by May, we can do it. But I'm not wanting to put it on May agenda unless the COVID's over with. Uh, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to clarify your, your question, Councilmember Kellum, is this discuss, this agenda item, and this, I guess, we go to Anthony too, if okay with you, uh, Mayor, and obviously with the councils, this exact item, what we're talking about here, have this conversation wh- when COVID is over. And so to not, I mean, to advance to go out right now is kind of a decision in itself. And what I'm thinking, what I heard was, we, we essentially postponed this to this, whenever COVID's over. So I'll copy and paste this agenda item and essentially just move it was, uh, my thought. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm willing to listen. I, I don't, to, to anything you feel strongly about Councilmember Kellum, and I hope, you know, I know the rest of the council will speak up, but that was my thought, was just everything we've said up to this point, I wish that we were together, number one. I wish this COVID was behind us, and most importantly, that the public was able to engage with the, everything we've said tonight. And so, thank you.
I'm, I'm just, am I, I'm just thinking that, you know, um, the COVID-19 hopefully will be over in May, and we'll, we'll get together, and then we'll have public participation to hear about, you know, what the, what the citizens of our city say about wanting Todd on. I don't know if we, I mean, it, it would, it's a shame to me, and what I'm thinking is that Todd leaded, led us through this, we got through the COVID thing, and now he got us this far, and now we're gonna go look for someone else. Um, uh, you know, when, when, when- You know, when, when, when Mayor and the council, I wasn't on the council then, gave the six months, was it because you were going to look for someone else? Or was it just the time, the six months to try to let things calm down from the last city council or the city manager? That, that's all I'm saying. I just, you know, that's my point.
At the meeting that you're referencing, the night we talked about city manager position, I stated to give him the six months time for the, for him to move into the job and let him run the city. But that, the first night, Mia was put in as city manager. Let me just back up there to, we put cities, we put Todd in after the second time. The first meeting, we had Mia. And at that time, we told, the council instructed the city to get a consensus amongst the staff, all the department directors. And I guess the department directors had input from their people that worked with them. I don't know, we didn't get that into that information. But we were looking to see how staff felt. They felt and what their feelings were. And they all come to the next meeting and they all consented that they had a unanimous vote unanimously. And anonymously, but I don't know how that took place. But they, they indicated that they would like to have Todd Morley lead them through this. And I stated at that time, we would give Todd a six months training on the job to come into the job. And at that end of six months, which has been passed now, probably two months, to see how his job review would come out with the council. And that's kind of where we're at. And it was to where we were going to stay and just take Todd on. Or at that, probably at that meeting was depending on how the council felt, would we go out? And that's where we're at. So we're still at that point, basically.
Right.
But Todd's here. And I, I just feel that the council feels right now that they're kind of wanting to take it out and wait until the COVID's over with. And I, I'll go along with that. I don't have a problem with that. Like I say, I'd like to work with the council. I like a majority of the council. And if that's what the council so desires to do tonight, we'll wait till COVID's over with. And then we'll have this item brought back to us on an agenda while we meet in full council with public present in the City Hall. Is that what the feeling is of everybody that's?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Raymond, I can't see you, but.
I think, I think that the, the meeting was October 17th, 2019. And that is.
I'm just asking.
But no, 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 I'm just giving the date. I didn't know if you remember the date, but I'm giving the date.
This six, this six months is up two months ago.
But October 17th, 2019 is when Todd became the interim city manager. That was October 17th. My whole thing is, I don't, and we can ask Mr. Morley, but I don't believe that Todd Morley is going to run away from Cape Canaveral City Council. He's been here near 20 years and I have a feeling that his loyalty is very strong and that he, he's going to stay here, hopefully. All right? So I just think that maybe we ought to hear from Mr. Morley. But I do agree that we do need to give this a little more time. Thank you.
I don't want to put Mr. Morley on defense on the stand. Thank you.
Oh, he's not going to be defensive.
No, I don't think that's necessary. He's here, he's doing the job. He's, I'm, I'm sure he's not going to leave. But I, I hear the council what you want to do and I think we can put it off until we meet in full with public, like the council's requesting. And I don't have a problem with it. So we'll move forward if that's all that we have to discuss on it. We do have items for discussion and I would think, do we have any public participation on this? Mr. Organizer?
There is an email. Daniel is going to put the email up that came in.
Mia, you can read it for us.
Okay, this is from Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 at 10:27 a.m. to public comments. Copying Stephanie Johnson. The subject is public comment registration. It looks odd because this came in on the form online. We have a, a public comment form that people can fill in. So the meeting date is 4/21/2020. Board name, the council. Agenda item number 10, topic, city manager. First name, Don, last name, Willis. Resident, true. Street address is 8984 Port of Del Rio. City is Cape Canaveral, zip code 32920. The public comment statement is, I would like to ask the city council to remove the interim label and install Todd Morley as the city manager for Cape Canaveral. And then the rest of that is our regular public records citation that's at the end of every email and that's it.
Okay. Okay, that was from Mr. Willis and well heard, I guess amongst the council. So is, is that all we have for public discussion on that item? Do we have any hands, Daniel?
Yes, we have several hands. Give me one moment, please. The first hand is Mr. Don Willis, who submitted that comment. So I'll, I'll unmute him first. Give me one moment.
Okay, inform him he has three minutes, so you know.
All right, Mr. Willis, I have unmuted you. I'm showing you as self-muted. Okay, you're, you're on, sir. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me to speak. I thought I was registering to speak. Otherwise, I would have been considerably more verbose. But I've known Mr. Morley for nearly 10 years since we moved here. And he has been everything that I would have wanted in a city manager. He's been very attentive to issues that I've had and inquiries that I've made. He's been available to the public. He's served the city very well. I've spoken to a lot of the residents of our community and local businesses. And they all seem to be, in my experience, favorable and would love to see Todd Morley as city manager. Of course, we're going through a trying time as it is. And I've hired a lot of people over my 40-plus years in business. And one of the things you really understand is how someone acts and responds under pressure. And I think Mr. Morley has done a wonderful job through all of this. And also, I know you mentioned that city council would be watching and seeing how he handled it. But I think you also need to understand how a person reacts when the boss isn't watching. And that is one thing I've seen Mr. Morley step up to the plate. He's been very proactive in his work and very conscientious about Cape Canaveral and what is best for Cape Canaveral as a city and its citizens. And I thank you for the opportunity and I hope that you ultimately do decide to install Todd as the city manager. Thank you.
All right, if we're ready to move on to the next hand raised, I have a, I have a Jay Petty with a hand raised. Jay Petty, you're on, you have three minutes.
Hello?
You're on, sir.
Thank you to the city council and to you, Mr. Mayor, for hearing me. I, I've been watching the, the meeting this evening. And, and I can't help but say that there's six months of actually pretty stupendous, a, a pretty stupendous way of acting in his position as acting city manager that Mr. Morley hasn't already been appointed. I'm quite honestly a little disappointed that the council isn't ready to make a decision after six months. And that Mr. Morley is tonight being appointed rather than discussed as being someone who is still the interim city manager. So I would, I would urge you to kind of get your act together and make the decision. Thank you.
All right, we have another hand raised. John Price. Mr. Price, you are on. You have three minutes.
Thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor for allowing me to talk. I, I'd just like to share my opinion and that is that the, the citizens of the city of Cape Canaveral have had more than six months to express their opinions about the performance of Todd Morley. And that's what the six-month interim period was all about. And that the statement by the city council would, was that at the end of six months, they would be prepared to make a decision. And I think the decision is, is surely the city council's decision. I appreciate the fact that you want feedback and input from the citizens of the city. But in my opinion, you've had plenty of time. I think Todd has demonstrated his abilities. He is exemplary in everything that he does. And I would request that the city council go ahead and make a decision this evening to take away the, the interim title and make Todd the, the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Daniel? Do we have any more online to speak?
Mr. Ray Osborne wishes to speak. Give me one moment here. Mr. Osborne, you're on, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of bring something together, which we were talking about earlier and what you're going through now and this decision making. You said you all wanted to get together and meet and get together and meet after this virus has been, you know, this pandemic's been lifted. But how many of you thought about maybe going out yourselves and get tested so that you can meet? And this would be a great way for kind of opening up our economy and opening up our city when people are encouraged to get tested and know that they're, they don't have the virus. And therefore you guys can meet in a building, you know, back in the city hall, because you've been, been tested for. So I, has anybody been tested for? And this might be a good way to, to bring this whole decision process with Todd Morley a little bit forward here. Fast forward a little bit by you guys getting tested. Just throwing that idea out. I'm not, you know, asking you to do it, but just thought it might open it up for some discussion.
We, we don't, I would have a problem with that, Mr. Osborne, just to answer your question. But we're looking to have public input from public being present. So that would be kind of hard. I, I hear what you're saying, but it would be almost impossible for us to do it the way that I'm feeling council wants to have this meeting. So we're going to proceed on forward. Daniel, any more hands?
I am scanning the list. Give me one moment, please. No more hands raised at this moment.
Okay, we'll close public participation on item number 10 on the agenda and we'll come back to the council. Council, you heard public and if you haven't made any decision other than what we've done before, we'll move forward. And just go on to item number 11. Anybody have anything additional they want to say? Other than the fact I, I would, I'll, I'll not going to say anything about how I feel, but I would just hope we get this item over with sometime and get on with business. I know Todd's doing a great job. I don't have any problem. But if you all want to wait until we get full decorum, full house and whatever at the council, we'll just have to do that. Because I don't want to have a, I don't want to have a split vote tonight. I know it's there if we do call for questions. So we'll just waylay this until we get together with a full, full council chambers or whatever. So hearing enough, nothing? Yes? Yes, Mr. Brown, yes, sir.
My, my conclusion this is, after, I think the council will have plenty of time once this COVID emergency situation is over, that when we come back to meet, that we can actually take a vote on it and decide then. That gives, we have plenty of time to go out and talk. We don't have to get together in a public forum. We can individually go out and talk to the, to the citizens of Cape Canaveral and get their take and arrive at a decision. I don't think that we need to have a public forum. We need to make, we were elected to make decisions like this and it's basically time that we make this decision. Good, bad, in favor of Mr. Morley or not in favor of Mr. Morley. It's time that we go ahead and make this tough decision. And we should be able to do that with, you know, at the next meeting.
That's what, I think that's what will happen, Mr. Brown, is the next meeting, when we can get together, the COVID. Are you wanting to, when the, when the COVID virus is over, I say at the next meeting. But are, are you saying before the COVID is over with or what is your input?
No, I'm saying at the, once we have the next meeting, it should be up to vote good, bad, or whatever for Mr. Morley's situation instead of dragging it out. The council will have plenty of time to go out in the community and get all the information they would obtain from a public forum. We have the ability to go ahead and, and survey the community. That's what they're trying to do and get all the information needed. And whether it be discuss his resume, to discuss what he has done already. And this should be enough that, without having a public forum, to go ahead and see what we need to do.
Council, is anybody objecting to that? Or are we just back to square one again and wait until next time we can meet? Go ahead, Nikki.
So, so council member Brown wants to make a decision at the next meeting. COVID or not COVID, if we meet like this, we're going to make a decision on, on Todd's hiring Todd. Is that what I'm understanding, Mr. Brown?
What I'm saying is, the next time we meet, if, I don't know if we can do it under the emergency situation, but it's going to give us enough time to join the community and do all the things that we would do at a public, public forum. We have the ability to set up meetings with the citizens on our own to go ahead and make a decision and or send out mass emails to the citizens and find out what their take on them. But the ultimate decision rests with us.
Right.
I agree with you.
Well, it, you know, I was looking through the agenda items or the, the summary that the staff put together. And in October 15th, Todd was picked as the interim city manager. And then on November 19th, Councilman Raymond brought up a discussion on hiring, the, the city manager hiring process. And council took no action. And then it wasn't brought up again until February. And we had, you know, we've had some public comments between that, but no one really talked about what we were going to do. And then I brought it up on February 18th. And then it was, the council decided to bring it back at the next meeting, which we got canceled to discuss it. But what I'm saying is, I don't want, I don't want it to linger on. I, I understand that we as the council have a decision to make. And, you know, as far as public opinion, that's important. But I don't want to linger it on and then, you know, Angela Raymond, Councilwoman Raymond wants to do a local search. I think we either pick one way or the other. We either are going to do a search or we're not going to do a search. You know, wait until we have more public opinion at the next meeting or I'm just trying to figure out what exactly. The next meeting hopefully will be in the chambers. If it's not. If it's not, are we going to take a vote on this then? And if, if it's at the next meeting, shouldn't we have, shouldn't we ask Anthony to start working on a contract for us to approve? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
The contracts basically are, would be the same other than starting salary or maybe a few things in there, but very likely it'll be almost the same contract that you have pretty too as for the contract right now with the city manager in the past and all the city managers, basically they're all the same, but very small change.
Mayor, Mayor.
But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing three different things. It seems like again, we're starting to start at the meeting. So, Mr. Gargan, Anthony, if you want to jump in, you got something to say?
I just wanted to address the contract issue. I mean, the first issue, the first question I need, the council needs to be, needs to answer. You know, is, is whether or not it desires to appoint Mr. Morley, the city manager. That direction would then, you know, be subject to a, a contract being completed and then presented to the city council at another meeting for final approval. Or alternatively, the council needs to decide whether or not it wants to conduct some level of job search, whether it's local or national, it's council's discretion. But, you know, that, that, those, those are, those are the decision points. But I just wanted to address the contract issue that it's typically, we usually typically get direction that you want to desire to appoint someone, the, the city manager, then the contract gets negotiated and presented for council's consideration.
We, we can't seem to get to that point. That's the
No, I know. I just wanted to address the contract issue.
Right, I understand. But it's, it's, it's usually a nimble, simple up and we look at it and say yes or no, or make a few changes. Mr. Brown? You raising your hand? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Well, it seems almost pretty simple. At, at the next meeting, we take a vote. And if he is not selected, then we start the process that misses that councilperson Raymond is that, is that, that's, I mean, pretty clear to me.
Okay, but during the meantime
Would be that we put it out, which that we would put it out at that point. If he's not selected, he's selected at the next meeting, at which point if he is not, then we put it, we put out, we go the direction Mrs. Raymond is indicating where we, you know, put it out for advertisement and do that.
Okay, if we go that route, and if we go on, Mr. Gargan easy has to bring a contract to that meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
Because then you're going to be waiting another month or two weeks, whatever it is, to get another meeting organized. So if it's either we make a motion tonight to have Mr. Gargan easy draw up a contract to bring it to this council for the next meeting to ratify that contract, or we go out for a search. That's what it boils down to, it seems like. So do you want to do that under a COVID meeting, or would you want to make that motion to do it in a public meeting at city hall with public there? That's, that's where we got to get to. We can't seem to get to where we, where we want to do it. We want to do it under the COVID? Or we want to wait until we get to city hall? That's what we need to decide tonight. And then that'll give Mr. Gargan easy the answer what he needs to do.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that Councilmember Raymond's got her hand raised. I don't know.
I can't see her. I just told her to jump in there because I can't see her with my screen. She's off screen.
All right. I thought that we've already come to the decision that we were going to extend the interim manager position. And that's what we, three, three of us had talked extensively about this. This does not, I just want to say something. This does not mean that we have not really thought about this or decided about this at all. I just thought that this was a discussion that we were going to postpone the discussion about this every day for six months. I'm very analytical. I have a chart made up. I know exactly what I want to say about this. I haven't said it yet because I think that we just are saying we would like to postpone this so that we could have the public present so that when the public wants to talk about this, they can. I've talked to a lot of city residents about this already, and I know how they feel about this. So I've done my homework on this for the past six months. And I really believe that our city would like to see what, who, who would be interested in this job? There might even be someone who is on city staff that might like to apply for this job other than Todd. And that's something that we've never considered. And there's, there might be a city resident sitting at home right now who feels he or she is qualified for this position. And they might like to be given a chance. All I'm saying is that I feel that one of our American values is equal opportunity. And I feel that that's what we need to give equal opportunity to people who might want to apply for the city manager position. Thank you. That's one of my thoughts. I still think that we pretty much have said that we would like to extend the position right now and then vote on it at a later date. Thank you.
Well, does anybody want to make a motion to extend Mr. Morley until the next meeting or make a motion as to what you want to do? Or do you just want to let it sit in limbo and wait until we do what, whatever falls in place? I
Don't, Mayor.
I'm ready, I'm ready tonight to decide. I have, I have done my homework for 18 years. I know, I know what I want to do. So I'm just
Usually we usually we don't make motions for discussion items.
I understand. I'm, I'm asking for a motion as to which way we want to go. We're, we're, we're hearing, I'm hearing a different thing from you. I'm hearing about the same thing from Mr. Morrison. I hear something from Mrs. Callum two different ways. Mr. Brown, I know where he wants to go and I know where I want to go. So it, it's up to the three, Ms. Callum, Mr. Morrison, and Mrs. Raymond as to whether you want to do something solid or you just want to let it sit in limbo until next time.
I don't like the way it's presented.
Um, Mayor. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm just wanted to, you know, are we going to extend this another six months? Because if we wait till the next meeting and then we say, okay, we want to hire him, then it's the next meeting before he
That's my point. I mentioned that before. You're going to be two more months before you even, even put the crown on him.
And then if we decide, if the next meeting, we decide we're going to put the job out for anybody else that wants to apply, then that's another, are we going to extend it six months or are we?
It's up to you people. I'm looking for a motion to move tonight. We can make a motion. It's a discussion item. You can make a motion to do whatever you want to do, but I haven't heard any motions other than this is what I want to do. This is what I, and everybody's talking something different.
I think that, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Go ahead, sir.
And I, I believe that this whole conversation here was what I felt needed to be in the entire public's eyes. And I respect what Mayor Per Tim Brown has said about going out, but that's, that's not the same, especially going out, whether it's mass email or door-to-door during COVID. It's the whole mindset of the community right now is limited. There is a professional way to go about this. And I think that there is no major injustice here, and I say this respectfully, and I'd say it that for 30 more days or 60, I don't think Councilmember Callum waiting six months is a good idea at all. But I mean, the, the truth of the matter is, Todd, you know, if, if we were, if we were, you know, not giving him the same benefits or, or income as the previous, and that would be dragging it out, right? But I don't think that's the case. And so 30 more days does not scare me. And if COVID, 60 days doesn't, I, I think that Todd is being compensated. He is committed to the city. He has proven that he wants this job. I think Mayor Per Tim Brown brought up a very logical point. I mean, you know, we get there and it's not so much, I didn't think of it that way of, you know, yea or nay on Todd. And then if nay, you go out, I thought was, hey, yea or nay on going out, but it's the same exact thing. It's just, Mayor Per Tim Brown said is the opposite. If you say nay on going out, that is saying yes to Todd. So I, I agree with him as well. But I don't think that just 30 more days is something that we should be scared of. I think that at that point, there's nothing slow about if Todd is the decision about getting a contract up. And it's, it's a 30, we don't have to do two readings through it. Fastest case scenario would be, you know, one more meeting to have this conversation again. And I know that we've heard tonight some public comments from people I respect very much in the community, but there are other citizens, and we've all been on emails that feel very strongly about another approach that Councilmember Raymond has alluded to. And just my comment, and I really didn't even want to get into this, is, you know, I feel to the citizens to do what's right here. Some citizens say you absolutely 100% must go out and locally, at a minimum, maybe even coastal community, as we saw one of the emails look, go out. And you prove that, that Todd is the right choice. And then other citizens have said, hey, if you know he's the right choice, go ahead and move. And I think today I'm saying neither one of those, but let's make that decision next meeting. 30 days is, I would move, if you want to motion, Mr. Mayor, so we can go on, I move that we take this agenda item.
Before you make a motion, let me make sure that everybody's through discussion, then you can move your motion. I'll just start alphabetically. Mr. Brown, you would like to add anything other than what we've heard or? I am off mute, correct?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Ms. Callum?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Morrison, I know where you stand. Ms. Raymond?
I really think that we should give this a and right now I think some of the public perception is that this is an inside job. And I've even heard good old boys, and I said, wait a minute, I'm not a boy. But I really believe that we have to be careful with public perception. And I feel that the, some of the residents would like to see us get a search, and this is good, I think, for Mr. Morley because I think it would give Mr. Morley validation. I do have to say, I feel that Mr. Morley has done an excellent job. I think that he gets along well with staff. He has a good relationship with all the council members. He has a good relationship with the mayor and with some of the residents. I think this is all positive. I just feel that we have to take that one extra step to uh, see who else might like to have this job and to have people have that equal opportunity to apply. Thank you.
Okay, then Mrs. Mrs. Raymond, on your thoughts? You would like to do that and open it up to the public to apply at the next meeting? Is that what you're? Is that what you're thinking?
No, of course not. I think that we can do this. Uh,
When do you want to do it?
I think that we have an HR director that is perfectly capable. She is an experienced HR
Know her very well.
Director, and she is perfectly capable of doing a local search to see who might like to apply for the job as Cape Canaveral City Manager.
Okay, when would you want to start that search? Will we meet again or after we meet again or?
I'd like to start it tomorrow. And I said that six months ago, that I thought that this would, I didn't think that it was necessary to spend a lot of money on a national search. However, I think that a local search is a very, very good idea. And I think that this would relay, this will allay any fears about an inside job. I think that some of our residents think that everything is just a good old boys network and it's just decided by handshake. And that is not the way that I think that we want to be proceeding.
Well, a lot of times you're, you have decisions that are tough to make. You're elected to make those decisions. And of course, you get all 10,000 opinions. You might get 500 for, 500 against, 5,000 for, whatever. But, you know, that's tough to sit here and say, yeah, it's a good old, and I know the good old boy stuff. That's that's not in my book. But anyway, I, I don't, I can tell you, I've, I've contacted two head hunters or no one. They're known as head hunters, job searchers. There's several names you call those guys. Both of them told me you keep the guy you got because you ain't going to find anything out there. That's better. That was, so help me God. So I'm not gonna press on. I don't want to make any, but there's a motion going to be made. We'll make the motion and see how it flies and we'll go from there.
I think that, uh, I think that council, gives me, I think that Councilman Morrison made a motion and
He hasn't made one, Miss Raymond. He starts to make one, but I've given everybody the last chance. He hasn't made one yet. He started to. But I want to, I want to clarify what you want to do. You, you're talking about going out and letting Mrs., uh, I, I can't remember the little lady's name now. I'm brain dead. Uh, you want the HR department to go out and make a search? When do you want to proceed that? Today, tomorrow?
A local search. I'd love to, I'd love to see it done today.
Okay, and it's just strictly local? And then there's a lot that goes on to that. How do we, are we gonna do any reimbursement of fees to these people to come here from?
No, no.
You don't know where they're going to come from.
If there is any
If you let me finish, please. There's a lot to this. You're going to ask people to come over here from wherever. A local could mean Orlando or anywhere. So it's going to be a non-paid search. Is that what you want to do?
Sounds good. They would have to give, they would have to submit their resumes, first of all.
You got, you evidently, you say you have all this tabulated and put together and so we want to get there tonight or are we going to wait until our next meeting for you to present all this?
I'll present it whenever I need to, when we, when we're going to make some type of a decision. I thought that we were going to extend this until after the COVID emergency.
Yeah, and I, Mr. Mayor, I think that just the tone and the nature of this, it, we're just an emotional time to be having this conversation. And I think that everyone's got some really good points and a 30-day extension should not scare us. And I don't think it, I don't think it's the wrong move. And I, I think 30 days, and we remember, we have the power to call a special meeting too. And so if, if we wanted to do it inside of that, we could, but it's all about COVID-19 being behind us. But my point is, is if we get 30 days, COVID-19's over, we have the meeting, we're able to take action, and we want to call a special meeting within a week after to bring the contract back, we could, or whatever action
Let me, I just right there for a minute, Mr. Morrison. I don't know if we can have a special meeting on this item with just a week notice or a two-week notice and satisfy public requirements as far as advertising. That would be something that we'd have to go back to Mr. Gargan easy for. If you're going to go that route.
We could do a regular council meeting with, or just a special council meeting with a one week's advertising. I mean, yeah, I think we could
I want to, Mr. Gargan easy weigh in on that point. Mrs. Callum had her hand raised.
I just wanted to, um, so the search that Angela wants, we're going to wait the 30 days and then start the search or start the search? Then meet in 30 days?
That's what I was trying to get down to. And it seems like we want to wait to 30 days. And there, what I've heard from Mrs. Raymond was And there, what I've heard from Mrs. Raymond was she wants to start the search tomorrow with HR. Now, that's what she wants to do, then she needs to put a motion out there. But first of all, I want to go to Mr. Garganese and answer a question about what would be the liability of the city to do a search? And how quick can we do a emergency meeting or whatever you want to call it, or a special meeting? And put this out and be right?
The, with respect to scheduling a special meeting, the special meeting requirements in the, in the city code would have to be met in order to publicly advertise before, before the meeting. So you can't have a special meeting. With respect to, you know, again, the choice is whether the council wants to appoint the city manager, the ten term city manager, the city manager subject to a contract, or alternatively, conduct some level of job search. That decision doesn't have to be made tonight. I'm hearing like mixed messages. Perhaps maybe that's the style of the next agenda item when you do convene in person to meet. You either appoint Mr. Morley, the city manager, subject to a written agreement, being brought back, or you give us direction to conduct some level of job search. It's a binary, it's a binary choice that needs to be made at, at, at some time.
Right, I understand. So what can do? We have different people, two different council members with an idea that they want to put forth. So we can probably go for the motion or let them make a motion and see if it goes. That's the way we'll go. If it doesn't go, then we'll go to the other one and see how it flies. We gotta get, we gotta get an answer as to when we want to do this and how we want to do it.
Mayor, but Mayor, I'm hearing, and I'm, and again, I'm just an observer here. But I'm hearing that that binary choice, there's consensus to make that when you meet in, meet, meet in person.
Yes.
And if that's the, if that's the consensus, then really no action needs to be taken other than we tee up an agenda item for the next meeting. So you can select which of the binary digits you want to select.
Is it gonna be a COVID meeting or is it gonna be after COVID? Because we've had that discussion before.
And that's exactly it. And just the confusion of this, I think it layers into the decision on this. But so I, I move that we, after COVID, we meet and vote on that binary decision on whether we want to hire and appoint Todd as the permanent city manager and or we go out and, and choose another path of searching. That's my motion and
For clarification, your motion is to meet in City Hall with full council chambers and public present in City Hall? You said after COVID. Is that what your motion is intended?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I, I'll second it, but I, I just, if we wait until after COVID and then we meet and then we decide we're going to look for a search, that's just delaying this, delaying this, delaying it. Can we make a motion where we're going to, for the next thirty days, put the search out locally? When we come back to meet publicly at the next public meeting, we may have some resumes to go along with our decision? I mean, is that something we can do? I hate to see us wait until the COVID is over, meet again, and then all this time is delayed where Todd is not put into the position.
That would be up to the motion maker if you want to amend that motion to be, be that way, yes. He has a motion on the floor and you second it, so.
I think that the reason I, I don't feel that's a good idea is I, while I like the idea of in-house doing a search, if we were going to go that path, I don't think that that's the high, a priority that, that our HR department should be, Melinda should be working on right now under these circumstances. This is the whole point is it's, you know, when blue skies happen is after the, the COVID gets behind us. And I think that that is going to be a prime time for people to take a deep breath, Todd, all of us, and, and come together. And so the only difference is, is we're saving thirty days. And I'm expecting COVID to be over at the next May. The, if we go out tomorrow and we don't have clarity on the process, we're going to disagree on the, maybe how that goes. And it just goes out and job descriptions and all are written. And then we found out, hey, we didn't really ever want to do that anyways. I'm a good one, I don't think Todd wants to do that. I mean, I wouldn't if I was him. So I don't, I don't think that's the right choice. I think that's an emotional choice tonight and I think we hold on that. And that's why I don't want to rescind my motion, Mr. Mayor. I, I do believe that a thirty day wait, the, the May meeting, we reconvene and, and we make a decision on Todd or to go out. Very similar as Mayor Pro Tim Brown said.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Anybody else gonna discuss or call the motion? Mia? Here are no discussions, call the motion.
Sorry about that. Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Cullum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison? Hello?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Wes, Wes's mic is delayed for like a second or two. You have to watch. When he speaks, his mic is delayed.
Okay.
Okay, the motion I hope was to wait for thirty days and then we'll come back and discuss whether Mr. Morley has the job or whether we go out. What about we wait and draw up a contract? Is that gonna wait after the, after that thirty day meeting? Or would you like to, just to come back to that motion, have Mr. Garganese bring you something that night? If you decide to go with Mr. Morley? Otherwise, you gotta have to wait another thirty days to
Thank you.
Bring his contract.
I, I don't know why we're scared of that. I don't know why that's such a big thing. I think this is pretty standard. And that was my point for the special meeting.
Well, it's, it's kind of beaten, I imagine it taking a toll on him emotionally a little bit, I would think. Would be me. Don't know whether I'm gonna be every thirty days, I gotta wait for another thirty days. I'm just saying. It's gonna have to be done anyway if we go with Mr. Morley. So if it doesn't go with Mr. Morley, it doesn't go anywhere then. But at least you'll have
I just think that's a bit leading. I mean, I think that that's honestly, it shows intent.
It'd be laying there for anybody that you hire.
It's very neutral when we come into that meeting.
Okay, then we'll just let it go as it is. I'm sorry I brought it up, because let him sit and wait again. Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. Discussion on reducing the fees and regulations for community in response to executive orders related to the COV nineteen. I don't know who put this on the, I didn't look and see who put this on the agenda.
Wes?
I, I put it on.
Okay, Wes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so this was a, hopefully to have a, a more of a no bad ideas little session here and we don't have to spend a lot of time. But my, my goal was after this, that if we feel that this is a good idea, as accounts on consensus has made, that, that staff with their help is able to maybe do a little research and, and dig in. I think that, I, I spoke with Todd today and he's already, you know, naturally in his position and thinking about things to be done. But I know we're all out there looking at the future ahead. And what I don't want is for, we, we need to, you know, be proactive and try to get out in front of this that if, if and when the, the downturn, you know, really starts to happen, how can we be the most business friendly city in the county? And, and, but reasonable and, and, and to do what is good for, for mutually the, the businesses and the residents of this community. And so two words in there were really fees and regulations. And so you see, you know, we're all in these maybe city updates and emails or it's basically legal cities and all of them. And you see what other cities are starting to do. And so I was just writing down a few ideas about things. I think the county delayed some payments. We see our merchants, the businesses during COVID nineteen that are doing forgiveness on things, maybe delaying mortgages, delaying items that are due. I think this is really under the scrutiny of Todd and, and John, delaying the whole finance team. And my goal was to work with council today. If you have any ideas on ways that we can help businesses from a regulatory standpoint and/or fees to cut a little bit of the red tape and cut some costs where we can afford it, that, that people can stay in business. I know that, you know, there's companies right now, we all are aware of, especially the, the hotel and, and restaurants, anyone in tourism right now is just completely devastated and some of them will not come back. It breaks for all those people out there. And so as a, as I some of those levers. And so today was about kind of doing a brain dump on maybe some ideas, if we have any, and then having staff come back, because I know they'll have ideas too on what, where the good ideas are, where the bad. And we can take action maybe at a future date. And so some of them, just to, to kind of get the, the conversation started was, well, first I want to compliment the action that's already been taken under supplemental, the mayor's supplemental order for flags and signs is an example of a regulation where we've already taken action. So maybe that one, we decide as a council, we want to extend in the aftermath after COVID. One thing is maybe we want to open that up and, and even if it's non-essential services, be able to go and let them, it's just a way to help them communicate with signs when people are very weary about walking in. And so these non-safety regulations that maybe are more aesthetically driven, that we can let those slide for a little bit and let our businesses grow. Some other ones were, that we brought out is, there are, and, and actually Todd brought up what, you know, there's fees out there that we might be able to reduce or waive or defer. Todd, if you wanted to, you know, chime in on business taxes, I think maybe that's a good starting point if you want on the fee side.
I did talk or email with the city attorney about business tax receipts. My question to him was whether or not statutorily we were locked in with business tax receipts. And I would like to defer to Anthony to speak to that. But I'd also like to mention that we do intend to bring to council in May a permit fee reduction resolution that Community Development Director Dave Dickey is working on. So I expect we'll see that in a resolution for one reading in May. So on the other item, I'd like to turn that over to Anthony for the local business tax receipts discussion.
Since two thousand fourteen, the Florida statutes does allow the city council to reduce business tax receipts by ordinance without having to go through the Equity Study Commission and coming up with a new rate structure. There are some nuances. I'm not clear whether this reduction would be temporary or permanent. That decision would, would have an impact on future revenues under the BTR licensing statute that you would have to consider. We would have to talk about those details when, when you, when you all look at this, all these ideas.
Okay, thank, thank you. And so, yeah, if, the, the quick way to do this would be that council says, yes, staff, bring us back if you can find, what are the top three things that we could, you know, do financially? And maybe what are the top three from a regulation that we can be thinking about? And like Mayor Pro Tim Brown said, you know, we, this is an opportunity for us to call our restaurants, the local businesses, retail, and say, hey, what are some, what are some major pains that you're experiencing here? That you would like, that, as the famous, or Mayor Emory, it says, Rocky Randall's is, how can I help you today? And he said it to many people through the years. And I think that that's the question that we can ask. And so I think staff can help us come back with some maybe proposals. Maybe Dave Dickey and that, those guys can think on community development and zoning. Maybe our CRA has a, has a, a tool in that box that we can put something to the side when we meet again on the CRA. And I'm going to stop talking, I'm rattling off some notes here that I had. You know, parking on the grass is something that, that would probably, you know, a lot of this has got to go through P and Z. But I know that that was one that, you know, if you're trying to stay in business and you just need more parking or you want to open up, maybe the we can look at that was I lost my note there, oh, there it is. And then looking at mobile vending again. I mean, if you live here and the, an opportunity for, for folks to get out and to start up a business as easy as possible. People are losing their jobs. And so mobile vending is a way for folks to come in and begin to sell products and services at a low cost. And so people aren't having to leave Cape Canaveral because they can't afford to live here, just to create opportunities. So those were some ideas. We don't have to get in a, I think, a big hurry today. But my goal was that we plant a seed in your head. We, we walk away and we maybe come back next meet, meeting and we can consider taking action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody want to discuss? Mr. Morrison's reducing fees? You have any ideas you want to add or discuss on what he has brought up? Uh, Mr. Brown, go off about it.
Yes. Oh, what, I was informed today by one of, one of our local businesses was set to get seventeen thousand in stimulus money, only to be, only to be told that the, that stimulus money had run out. So anything that we can help the citizens in our city, if it's by reducing fees or reducing taxes, I think that's, I, I think that's a plus. Anything that we can do as a council to help them bear some of these, what they're going through right now, I would totally agree with.
Ms. Cullum?
Um, yes, I, I agree as well. And I think if we, if we can reduce the business tax temporarily, maybe that would really help the businesses. And then the regulations on the signs that we did the emergency signs in the resolution. If we could extend that, and I know Todd had sent me some pictures of lit signs that we could use, that businesses could use. Is that right, Todd?
Yes, ma'am. I was, I had a business owner who we, who asked if the city council would consider allowing temporarily portable electronic message boards for businesses to advertise. And I did put that question to each of the council members. And there is some thought on that, both for and against. And if you would like to consider that, we would like to present both sides of that.
Yes, I think we need to consider it because we need to help the businesses. I mean, there's businesses like Zachary's that have been there thirty years and is, or they're really dying. And, you know, it's a family run business, small and large. I know the American Legion and the VFW, which I'm involved in, and they help the community a lot and they are really, really hurting. They're sending letters to the members to donate money to keep the doors open. So anything that the staff can come up with that we can help the local businesses is really important. Nonprofit businesses as well as, you know, local retail you know, local retails, shops and restaurants, um everybody. And I wondered, and I'm going to ask this, I know that, you know, the regulations were, and I'm going to ask Todd this. Uh, the city, under the emergency thing, we didn't close the beaches. We left them open. Um, but we did the parking thing. As far as the restaurants are concerned, is there a way or can, is it because of the governor that we can open the restaurants with the social distancing inside?
We are superseded by the governor's order on that.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure about. Okay. But yes, I would be, I would like to uh do whatever we can as a city to help our small businesses. That's really important. And the flags, uh definitely the portable signs, whatever we need, you know, and it doesn't have have to be forever, but the council can decide on how long. But to get these businesses up and running again and our economy going, I think it's really important. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Raymond.
Of course, I want our businesses to continue. I think that it's going to be a hard road back for many of them. They have high, high rents, I understand. And um I'm not certain how some of these businesses are going to be able to afford to continue paying their rents. I'm really very, very worried about that. Anything we can do to help them, I think, would be great. Of course, I think that we have to look at our general budget and our general fund to see, to make sure that we have enough to cover our city expenses too. So I think we have to look at both sides of the picture before we make any decisions on this. I'm also concerned about some of our residents being able to afford to pay their rent. Uh, after uh April thirtieth, they're going to have to come up with their rent money. If they don't have a job, I don't know where they're going to get the money from. By that point, I'm sure April thirtieth, if they receive the twelve hundred dollar stimulus check, it's going to be gone by then to just be able to sustain themselves with enough food. So I'm very concerned about our entire city and every city resident. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know uh what to think. I I know you all covered everything that I would uh and I support it all. I don't have a problem with anything. The only thing that we need to decide as a council is how long and when do you allow this to continue to? And that would be also a investigation part on part of staff as far as the money's involved, what would be involved and what would do to the budgeting that we've already set for this year and possibly even affect next year's budget. So that would be something that staff needs to bring back to you that we just can't say, well, just cut everything. Uh, you're going to have to decide when, how long you want to let this run, and exactly what you really want to do and how you want to go about it. And that's going to take some investigation on staff's part to do that. So um I don't have any any qualms about anything that was said, other than I know that we do allow certain things and we don't allow certain things. And when we did allow a few feather flags in the city, up popping all the feather flags already. And you're only supposed to have one feather flag according to the way we put it out there. One feather flag and one sandwich board sign or snipe sign is known as. You can have one of each, but not two of this and one of that and all this. So it's already been taken advantage of. I noted today, but not going there, not going to mention publicly who it is, what it is. But when we do these type of things to try to help them, you don't want it to get overboard and laden with too many, because that's why we did away with it. The flashing signs that we were, Mickey was just talking about. We used to have those years ago. They weren't LED flashing signs. They were what they called reader board signs at that time. And it's that they're so long, they got very deplorable, the flat tires and frames about rusting off the place. So that's that's basically why the city did away with that type of stuff. Because the operators didn't keep it operable. They sat there and just become very dis- just I don't know. They didn't look good. Let's put it that way. So that's why the city, that's why we did away with that. But anyway, I'm all for, yeah, helping the business. I'm the sky. I'm I'm a essential worker. We're classified as essential, so yeah, it's affecting me. Sure, it's affecting me. It's affecting everybody. But um we can do what we can to help as far as what our finances will and Mr. DeLeo and Mr. Morley and of course, Mr. DeLeo's team will have to get together and see just exactly what they can put together. And that's going to have to be brought to you at the next meeting. Because we don't have any clue what we can do. They heard everything you heard, I'm sure. And uh they can put something together, maybe to help and maybe not so much to help or maybe a whole lot. But we have to also remember your city has to operate and function. So I uh just don't have anything to add to it other uh other than I hope that they heard you loud and clear. And if somebody's got something they want to add before we go to the next item.
Mr. Morley, I see your hand popped up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, before we leave item ten, I want to make sure that uh we have some clear direction. Uh, so we will be bringing to you the permit fee reduction resolution. Um, and this is in response to item ten, and it's something we felt was the right thing to do anyways. And we will be um evaluating the local business tax receipt options, and we will get an answer back to you on that. Um, we didn't get any real clear consensus on amending or um re- re- reducing the restrictions on any temporary signs. So um I'll take that as no consensus that we we don't wish to change anything about the electronic sign uh prohibition currently. Just want to clarify that.
I'll I'll speak on that. I I or we'll just go off about it. Let's go off about it. Stay in order like we were. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
No, I'm I'm in agreement.
What we'll do. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with electronic signs, but I think it's gonna, what about the area like on Columbia and Astronaut, where you have a you have a business, a a business condominium area that has probably twelve businesses in a small area, and there's not enough right of way for each one of them to have electronic and probably a feather. So there's some issues that you would have to address as far as first come, first served, or how 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 do we take care of something like that? You understand, you 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 know the situation and location I'm talking about, Todd?
Columbia.
There's not that much frontage. There's not that much frontage for everybody to have a sign.
I'd like to just add my two cents on it. I would condominium association, the Columbia complex you're talking about on Columbia and North Astronaut. Those kind of places, they have multiple businesses within one building. If they want to put up an electronic reader board sign under this situation, like I've already discussed with Todd, I don't have a problem with them as long as they're maintained. But in a situation like that, there would be one reader board sign and everybody that wanted to advertise on it, chip in and and you'll get advertised on it. You'll have one sign. That's what I would back there in that area. And any of those type of like Narval Meats and Dully, that area, if they want a reader board sign or an electronic sign, one sign, other flags per business, like we stipulated. I don't have a problem with it, but we need to have control of it. And I know where you're going, Mike. Uh, I I fully agree with it.
Um, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On on the issue of electronic signs, I, you know, I know Todd was looking for some direction. I, you know, David Dickey and I were talking about that today, and we tried to put something together really quick to give you some background information. In the event that issue came up specifically tonight, I would recommend that you just defer that. That issue's complex. Um, you have no regulations on the books that currently allows the variety of different types of electronic signs. In fact, in many cases, those electronic signs could compete against other businesses without electronic signs and actually negatively hurt businesses economically. Um, it may have unintended consequences. So I think it's an issue that you really need to chew on before you give any clear direction on that. That's my opinion, at least. I don't know if Todd has a different one.
Anthony, would not that have to go through P and Z too before it comes to us? Something that would make her, that would be an ordinance change?
Yeah, not on an emergency regular, emergency measure of the chapter two fifty-two doesn't need to go to the planning board, but if you were going to create something beyond an emergency measure for temporary relief, then it would have to go because it would be a land development regulation and have to be reviewed. I'm just telling you, the issue can be complex. The variety of those signs can be much may not even be what you're thinking about and potentially could end up in Cape Canaveral. It's why a lot of cities ban them outright. They do compete and have certain negative effects on the community, and you really need to look at that issue with your eyes wide open, in my humble opinion and experience.
Yeah, but my my point was that we're not by by doing this a lot, if we do allow them, that wouldn't be changing our existing ordinance. This would just be the emergency under the emergency uh resolution, basically.
But the emergent, the emergency measure is predicated upon the emergency declared by the governor, the president, as well as the local emergency declared by the city council. If that emergency goes away, then you don't have a vehicle to continue to implement an emergency measure.
Okay, my understanding. Okay, that's.
So I don't, I can't predict when that emergency measure may go away or emergency may go away, but it would, it could impact how you have to handle that issue procedurally.
Okay, so we best let uh staff bring something to us the next meeting?
Yeah, that that's.
That's what the consensus is at the council? We'll just take a poll. Yes, sir, Mr. Morrison.
Yep, it was, and I just had a yes, thank you. And and also not just those things, but my hope was that um you go in all the way down the line items and and thinking about other ones that we can um we can propose to them. I mean, anywhere that we can ease a burden, even if it's not, you know, eliminating or avoiding a fee, just reducing it by a percentage and then communicating that to all the businesses. I think they'll make them very happy that their Cape Canaveral's doing something for them. So that is a, I didn't want to just box it into those two areas um from a from a fee standpoint. And then regulations, I mean, the same approach uh and and I'll bring you know, have time to get them on the agenda, but seriously considering uh mobile vending again. I mean, this is a time to where when the door closes on a business, I don't want to look back and say, man, we kind of got wrapped around the axle on that mobile vending or that sign, we should have just let them have it. Um, or we we really only cut five percent of that fee, you know, twenty percent maybe would have done it for them or use the CRA in a way to help. So I didn't. I will bring ideas forward too between now and the next meeting and try to get them on the agenda. But not just those two, to approach it with an open mind and encourage the remaining council to come forth. Um, I'd love a survey to go out to all of our businesses. I know that we have the ability to communicate to them and say, hey, what are the top three things we can do for you or or maybe kind of frame it in what we have control over? We might find that no one even wants, you know, the majority don't even want electronic signs, if that would be an example. Um, or we don't want to open that at all. But I think that and I'm happy to help on that survey anyway. Um, if it's you know, getting it out, but I know we got a talented team who can maybe get something emailed out. We can put it up on social media. I'll help share it. I know we all walk and talk to these restaurants and businesses and retails too. So um, just kind of an open mind to come back with not just those, but if you can think of some more, I'd I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on the um the issue of food trucks, AKA mobile dispensing vehicles, that's an an item that I spoke with Mr. Dickey about today. Regardless, it's probably going to have to come back to the council anyways. We can certainly add that to the list. Um, there's a, there's a bill that was passed by the legislature. Um, it has an effective date of July one. It has not been presented to the governor for for consideration and signature yet, but if it does pass and become law through the governor's office effective July one, um, the city could not uh totally ban mobile dispensing vehicles anymore. So that can regulate certain aspects of them. But that issue will have to come back to you, assuming that becomes law.
Okay, so that that would mean basically the the a mobile vendor would have to find a place to to squat and then have that landlord's permission, I would assume from.
Well, possibly. I mean, there's different ways to regulate, but I'm talking about mobile dispensing vehicles, those that serve food. Um, not 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 someone who sells other other types of products.
The mobile vendors, they'd have to have landlord's permission to 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 sit there or somewhere wherever they sat, I'm sure. We'd have to, we'd have to put all that into into.
You gotta take into consideration zoning and all that other stuff. That's an issue that not only, if it if it if it becomes law, that's not even an emergency measure. That's a matter that is going to have to be dealt with through the normal procedure of going through a land planning agency, city council adoption of ordinances as well, et cetera. So I just wanted to mention that since it was brought up.
Well, I don't, Mr. Morrison, I wouldn't, I don't know. Do you want to spin wheels on that for just this emergency? Or do you want to let that just go till then or because the staff's listening to what you want to do?
Yeah, well, if it's i- if it comes July one, we're still need to be ready. If it doesn't come July one, I I think we should seriously consider it. I mean, think about it. We're all in safer at home, locked down. And right now in City of Cape Canaveral, food trucks are not allowed. And I think Domino's Pizza is somewhat of a food truck. They drive food right to your door. They're like a hi, hello, thi- this is a, this is the a way for us to stay at home and eat safer. And I'm like, what a great, this is when food trucks should be thriving. And I have heard summer around. And I'm like, it's sad, it's against the law. You know where I stand on this. We we didn't get through it um last time, but if we could seriously bring that back no matter what, mobile vending, um, you know, that's something that I think would give a huge opportunity for this community. And um that is that's just my take on it, not just food trucks, just seriously consider any type of mobile vending.
Are you? Can I ask you a question, sir?
And I don't know if council, I don't know if staff needs to do anything. I don't feel like, I think we actually done quite a bit of work already on it. Um.
They'd have to do something as far as where would this guy go to, whoever? Where would he go? Just pull in on the parking lot and park there or?
No, well, I mean, who's going to go on somebody, by the the mechanisms there that you can't just go up on somebody else's property without having their consent?
Well, that's my thing.
Yeah.
Got to work all that out.
Not allowed on public property. I'm not advocating for that. Even though with the beach parking closed, it would be pretty cool if those were stacked up with food trucks there. But no, obviously you'd have to have private property uh consent. Um, but I don't.
Okay, I I know what you're saying. My next question to you, just to clarify what you're saying, and so does council understands. You said that food trucks, that's inclusive of anybody and everybody that wants to come into the city or just somebody that lives in the city? Because you might bear in mind, if you bring everybody in, now you're competing with your brick and mortar restaurants who are suffering right now anyway. So you have to be real careful on how this is presented and how it's put forward.
Yeah, I'm, I I I don't, I haven't seen the data that supports it. I don't want to go down this road, but I'll answer your question. I believe that we need to have, just like Councilmember Raymond said, equal opportunity. I think that that we don't, we shouldn't discriminate from brick and mortar. We shouldn't protect brick and mortar. We should give everyone a chance. And if a brick and mortar can't afford to pay their rent right now, then in Cape Canaveral, they can stay here and put their restaurant on wheels. And I think that the more restaurants we have, the residents win, the people who live here win. We've got more options on different places to eat. And in fact, the data that I've seen has shown that the more restaurants you have, it actually helps the brick and mortar. And I'm happy to, and I supplied that uh those reports that were done. And so.
Remember all that. But I I differ with you on one respect. Uh, I know people personally that have put up vending trucks. And you're talking probably anywhere from to buy a vehicle first, you got to buy the vehicle. Now you got to do all the interior and you're talking thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. No people that have done it. They go over to the Citrus Bowl in Orlando. That's the big thing over there when one of my buddies does that. But uh now we're talking about the poor restaurant that can't. But, uh, now we're talking about the poor restaurant that can't afford to even hardly do anything, but he's going to go out and spend thirty-five thousand dollars on a truck. It ain't going to happen. I know what you're, I know what you're saying there, but it isn't going to happen. So I'm, I'm driving at the question as to, will you want staff to, uh, put something together to bring back to the council? But are you going to allow people from Orlando or wherever to come into the city and compete with your restaurants that are suffering? Is that what your idea is?
Question, so local only. Yeah, I think that'd be a good conversation to, to have. I don't know if we, I don't like discriminating on that either, but local.
Well, that may be preempted. So come July one, that whole issue may be preempted. And it doesn't matter if they're from, from Georgia, Atlanta, uh, Louisiana or Orlando or Cape Canaveral. They're all, as long as they're licensed by the state, they're going to be treated the same.
We're talking about something that we want staff to put together before COVID, before this COVID virus is over with, to help the city, to help the businesses, to help the people get out. But we're, we need to be specific on who's going to come in with a vending truck. Otherwise I won't support it. I'll tell you right up front.
So why don't we just hold this loosely and don't get, spend too many resources? And maybe if we have an update, if, if maybe Anthony and or Dave or Todd have an update, if there's something relevant, staff can bring it up. Otherwise we'll leave it alone and wait till July.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to put across. Cause what you're advocating is good, but you're advocating something that's leaving it open to the other people that come from out of town to compete against your people that are suffering already. So I don't have a problem with food trucks.
And I know that was a big.
But, uh, let's, let's look at that. If you don't want staff to worry about it, just say so and they won't even worry about that. Cause that's the money you're writing.
We're worrying about it because the law may change and we're, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve.
We can't do anything if the law changes and advocates that they can come here, so we can't do anything about it.
Well, no, we have, we have to address it because the current code prohibits it outright. So that, that prohibition is, is pre- will be preempted come July one, that's all.
When that happens, Anthony, but right now we're talking about, right now.
No, I, I know, but we're, we're in April and July first is coming quickly.
Well, I don't, I don't see having staff waste time on putting something together and you writing something up to bring to us and spending all that one, when we're only about a month and a half, two months away from what's going to happen anyway.
Okay.
So I, I just can't see the point of doing it. But, and especially if we're just going to leave the door open for anybody to come in, I'm not going to support that at all, no. Not when we got people suffering right now. So I don't have a problem with a local food vendor coming in underneath this, but he's going to get that anyway come July. So I think it's, I think it's something that's a, it's a mute issue that we shouldn't even worry about. That's my feeling.
Yeah, the truth is, is Anthony's already watching the state and the team are, and so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We'll find out.
But you were advocating that you wanted to do that and your staff listened to what we're, what we're talking about, what I did. Miss Callum.
Yeah, I just brought up mobile vending and Anthony said, hey, well, might be solved for us, so, um.
You went a little bit further than just bringing it up. You were advocating to bring it in and helping to, you know, you even stated about the last pass you brought to, I understand, but I just want to clarify if you don't want, staff don't need to be wasting the time when it's going to be happening in two months anyway. So that's my, my point. We don't want to be spending money fruitlessly that's not going to help anything.
Yeah, my point, just so we're clear, is that if it comes July and it doesn't go through the state, that we still take action. We're not preempted. That we, I am advocating that we consider it, whether it's local or not. We bring that back. Uh, but I agree with you, Mayor, that we do wait till July.
Yeah, I'd rather wait. Let's call him. You wanted to say something?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that, um, oh, it's a good idea, but I think that would, right now in this COVID nineteen, that that would hurt the local restaurants more than help them. Um, because they can't, you know, they can't, they can only do takeout stuff. And is there any regulations on food trucks at, during the COVID nineteen? Are they allowed to, you know, serve? So I, I don't think that that would help us with the businesses um, that are struggling, the little businesses, uh, to bring a food truck in would hurt them right now, I, I think. Um, but I, I think that we should definitely, like, uh, Councilman Morrison said, maybe put a survey out to the local businesses on how, um, as a city, we can help them. Um, I like the building permit reduction, the business tax thing, and whatever else we can come up with that staff, ideas that staff had that, you know, also doesn't, um, you know, are hurt our bottom line. Um, and the CRA money, is, is there a way that we could use that? Like, uh, Councilman Morrison said, to help businesses at all?
I'm thinking of, I'm, I might be speaking out of the box, but I think with our agreement that we went through to get, get, being picked down to the bone, that we wouldn't be able to do that. Because it was very explicitly put to us by the commission. Uh, if Mister Morley wants to weigh in on that, or I don't know if it's necessary, but, uh, he can speak on that.
Um, we definitely want to look very closely at that agreement and also at the plan. As you know, anything that, uh, is expended through the CRA has to be in the plan, um, and not also preempted by that agreement we took made with county. So we're going to have to look closely into that before I answer that.
Right, in, in addition, on an annual basis, the city has, has to have its auditor confirm that all the expenditures that the CRA makes is consistent with, um, with Florida statutes and the interlocal agreement between the city and the, and the county. So, um, typically those funds are used for capital improvement measures.
Yeah, I couldn't think it would fly. That's why. Okay, Mrs. Raymond, I can't see. Are you raising your hand or do you need to say anything before we go on?
I have nothing to say. I have a muted button here and I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, staff kind of understands where we want to go and, uh, they took, I'm sure, notes of what was mentioned and maybe they will come up with some other ideas, Mickey, that we haven't thought of, so. I know that, I know that, uh, they have been working on the permitting fees because that's something that I was very interested in looking at. But, um, because the, that's paid by the citizens, not by the contractors.
Right.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to item number twelve, if that's, that's for that one.
Yep.
That's, uh, a discussion for policy and budget under the civil emergency related to the COVID nineteen submitted by Mister Morrison.
Yep, and so we went from regulation and fees to policy and budget, kind of synonymous things, but there is a difference here. This one was, um, first of all, thank you so much, um, John. I think we all received that the, um, little, uh, the update from, that normally comes out in our weekly update, uh, with the once a month of financials that took us all the way through March. And, um, so I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, that with council. Make sure that we're on the same page. COVID, um, I think has added some costs in there as well, um, that John was able to provide that I don't think anyone could have ever predicted. And so just make sure that there's any action that council needs to consider taking, um, moving forward. Uh, I think his projection, John's that is, and whoever of twenty-five percent, it's a good projection, a lot of the people I'm talking to. Um, I'm very happy with, uh, the policy that the city has. You know, best practices according to John is seventeen percent of your operating to be in reserves. Um, city's got a twenty percent policy and as John pointed out in his memo, we're well over that by a couple percent. And I don't think that's the story for a lot of cities. They're going to deplete their reserves. Um, those that are really dependent on sales income tax and, you know, other taxes that are going to get hit. And so I got all the confidence in the world that our staff will get ahead of this, as they already are, and be able to, to help us, um, skate where the puck is going for, there you go, Anthony, you hockey fans out there. Um, and so I wanted to just chat with council on any things from the budgets, um, and that, that we might need to consider. And then also, um, you know, Todd and I were talking today about the strategic planning meeting. And, uh, that meeting, uh, is something that very difficult. We had obviously canceled. But if we don't have the opportunity to, to do that, I, I understand why we wouldn't. Um, but that really kind of set the stage for what rolled into the budget. You know, we got statutes and laws where we got to meet those deadlines with the county and the property appraiser and all this stuff that we've got to meet. So if we're not going to have that strategic, one of the better meetings we have, if we're not going to have that, you know, maybe we come back and do a pre-workshop meeting before we get our first, um, budget proposal. Uh, we have a, a, a meeting and today, that is one thing that I did want to consider having is that we get an opportunity to weigh in. Todd and I chatted about some ideas on kind of how we can participate at a distance. Um, and it's really policy and budget. It's just all together, you know, as, as council, we're responsible for passing a budget every year. And with COVID, just want to stay ahead of this and be able to look citizens in the eyes and say, hey, our team is on it. I've met with council and here's what we're going to be doing. Um, and it may be no change. We don't need to do anything. Um, so that is the update. And so John, I mean, with your permission, Mayor, if, if John is on here with us, um, it might be helpful to kind of give a narrative or Todd on how we're. Do, if there's anything he wants to add, that might be helpful.
I will, uh, defer to John if he's on.
Give me one second to unmute him.
My, I've been, I have.
You are on.
Uh, okay, now I'm on. Um, yeah, Wes, thanks for, uh, thanks for asking. So, um, basically let me just advise council that the skies are not fall, the sky's not falling, but revenues are. Okay, that's these, the budget, we, we prepared well. We, the city has the financial stability going forward. Now, one thing we need to understand is if this thing was to continue through June or July, we're going to have significant hits in, uh, that, that memo I gave you on all these accrued revenues. They'll take some significant hits. But the thing about it is, is like Wes had alluded to, that I discussed with him earlier is that we have twenty-two point nine percent on obligated reserves, three point two million dollars. Maybe a lot of cities don't have that. But that's why we have that because we have an, this is unprecedented time. Normally, the reason why this policy I'm sure was put together is, is God forbid a bad hurricane, right? But let's think this way, we don't know when COVID nineteen's going to go away. The CDC said today that they believe in October, November, there'll be a second wave and it'll be worse. God forbid. But here's the part I want to bring in is if we continue on in April and May, we'll probably lose even fifty percent of our revenue, or of these revenues I showed you here. We're bright, we'll probably climb by the end of May to five hundred K. Maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more. Okay, but this is the silver lining. That's why we have three point two million dollars. Okay, that's why we have this city policy to pull us through if we have to. But we're not going to touch any, we won't have to touch any of that money if the situation gets better, but we may have to touch part of it. And if we have to touch part of it, that's what it's there for. So the citizens, citizens know that council has prepared well for an event that we wish would have never came, but it's here. Um, I think your ideas about permits and BTRs are significant, are significantly, uh, good ideas. But I think the one thing council really needs to remember, remember I said this, because down the road you'll remember I said this, is that anything you reduce now, we will need later. We want to help the citizens. I understand that council's got their, uh, mind in the right places. Hey, you know what? If you could reduce things, some things and take the strain off, uh, people, there's no doubt. Small businesses, if this continues a few more months, yes, small businesses, some of them will never come back. But need to realize that anything that we do now, and you've, you've set with, uh, Todd that we need to go forward and, and have a plan and come back to you. And we'll do that. But somewhere, when this is over, October, November, December, whatever, we will have to bring those revenues back because otherwise we don't want to have to raise taxes because we're going to lose some tax money in next year's budget. But you can't just, you got to take it away, but someday you got to bring it back because we're going to have a tax implication too. Okay, but we're ready for that too. And when you get, when I, when we give you our budget, your budget on one July, Wes, I know you said maybe pre-planning, but we'll be talking from now up until one July. We give you a proposed budget. You're going to have plenty of time to look at that and do what you believe you need to do in the best interest of, of the citizens of Cape Canaveral. And we'll move, you know, we'll move forward and we'll adjust that budget. Maybe there's certain things we can't do next year. Maybe we're going to want to roll back a little bit. But, um, that we have the financial stability, we're very strong and we can weather the storm. Now, if the storm goes through September, that'd be one hell of a storm. But if it just goes for two or three months and we're, it could get the community back to work and everything, we're going to be just fine. That's all I have.
Okay, John, I understand everything you said and I, I'm right behind you on it all. And it's two problematic problems would be coming around if we go too far out of reach. And that's, we'd have to raise taxes, which we probably don't want to do. None of us want to do that and we've been lucky for the last six or seven years where we've always been below rollback. And the citizens have really had a, a light tax for the last six years. Way less than what it's been normally before. And then the other problem is, is, uh, we got Mister Hurricane season starting here in a couple of months.
Yes, Mister Mayor, uh, I was just.
Look at this real strong.
Yeah, the hurricane, that's going to be very problematic. And as you know, reimbursements from FEMA for Hurricane Matthew took two years to get that. So the money coming from FEMA, it's not going to come, come real quick. But, um, my staff's been on top of every expense we have. And I've already received the package. They have to file with FEMA when the time is right. But I have a very, uh, good staff and, uh, we're tracking every penny.
There's still people waiting on FEMA money, I understand, so.
Terrible.
They're still waiting, so it's not something that we look at real lightly and it's, it's that, that three point two million dollars, that's your kicker for like two and a half, three months of operations. And if you get a storm on top of this storm that we have right now, you're going to be hurting if you, if you go too deep into your wallet, so. And, and I don't want to come back to the taxpayers with a four point one or four point two next year. That would be just unbelievable to have to do that to pick it all back up. So I, I, I want, uh, and there's a lot of people that don't really like business that much and they don't want you spending their tax dollars on certain things. And you hear it all, you'll hear it all. Between now and next month, you'll hear, you'll hear a lot, I'm sure. But, uh, staff's got their marching orders as far as I know and, uh, they can maybe put something together that will help the businesses. Yeah, I'd like to help them too, but you can only help so much. So, uh, with that, if anybody's got any final words on item number eleven, or I mean, item number twelve, I'm sorry. We'll close, close it out and we'll see if there's anybody wants to speak online. Anybody, any council, you have anything? Nobody? Miss Callum, go ahead. Miss Callum, can't hear you.
Did, uh, Wes, we brought up the budget, uh, is there a discussion that Wes is going to bring on the policy of this? Did, uh, Wes, we brought up the budget, uh, is there a discussion that Wes is going to bring on the policy of this civil emergency? Wes? You know that? No.
Um, yeah, so it was an open, it was a kind of two different things and said, is there any moves that we need to make on the policy? Anything we need to do on the budget, this is a time to talk about it. And, you know, we heard from John, feels like it's going to be okay, but we also heard that it may not. And you know, one more, a couple more months of COVID and a couple more, maybe you throw one hurricane in there. And I think it's going to be the decisions that we make today. That are going to pay. And so if we believe that there's nothing else we can do. Then, then, okay, I, I, I mean, I. Wanted to have that discussion, but while it's on one hand, we say, hey, if we cut for the biz, you know. Businesses are making cuts. Um, and you know, if we're able to to help them, that's good, but that money needs to go somewhere. Well. You know, we can seriously look at where we can cut as well. And I've seen it every year, our budget. I've been on has tend to go um, up and I think, and and I've been very outspoken on certain areas that I don't think. Should be as high. And so I think that we need to really look at. Look at our budget. And normally we would do this in the strategic planning meeting. Now we're not going to have that. And so I I think ultimately. Having that pre-meeting before July one, and I'm, I'm, I'll have it in a couple of weeks if we want and to say. Should we be making any changes today? Should we make any transfers? Should we make any cuts? Should we do anything? Uh, should we press down in another area to create uh, you know, more opportunities for us? That's what I'm at and. Ultimately, um, from a civil emergency standpoint, I don't. I don't think we need to be in a civil emergency anymore. I think that we are ready to meet as council for all the reasons. I think it's time to move forward. And whether we make that decision today, we need to start getting in our minds. We heard from the governor. That there's going to be some phases and I just want to get prepared for that. That we start parachuting out of this. We saw, um, you know, Jacksonville's opened up, the state of Georgia's opening up. And I think faster we can open up and not, you know. Get caught into the fear game, but be smart about it. And I have compassion for anyone who's dealing with it, but. In Cape Canaveral, um, our COVID positive cases are are low. And I heard the number two, like Councilmember Raymond said, and we heard maybe it's under five. But when you look at this civil emergency or where we are from a policy, I would like to see us get back into full. Functioning government again, um, out of these powers and make some more long-term policy decisions. So. Um, that is a civil emergency. That's what I feel strongly about and I know by resolution we can do that. And so. I think, I, I don't know how many more days we need to stay under this. Um, I think. There's not many powers that's happened or or a reason to to meet quickly right now. Um, and if, and if things start to tick up, we can call another one just as fast. And so. Um, that, that, that was really policy, my, the broad things that was on my mind.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, would that would end our discussion on that item, I guess, unless somebody else. Mickey, are you?
Councilmember Raymond has her hand up.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see her. I can't see her. Uh, Ms. Raymond.
I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, drastic times mean drastic measures. I think as far as the businesses go, I don't think we should go hog wild, making any changes whatsoever. I think we need to find out month by month, we're going week by week now. We still have the governor's orders. And we have to follow the governor's orders. We, it's his executive order. And I just think we have to wait and see a little bit more. We're going week by week, day by day. And I don't want us to, you know, have any knee-jerk reactions here about helping. When we may have to help ourselves is what I'm thinking. And I know we don't ever want to raise taxes. However, if we need the money, we're going to need the money, especially if we get hit, like the mayor said, with a hurricane. So I just think we need to have a really good general idea here. And we really don't know how long this is going to go on. My guess, I have a guess, I think at least until June first. And um, I think we need to be careful. We have a very vulnerable population here in Cape Canaveral. And I think we need to be very sensitive about that. We have many residents who are afraid to even come out the front door. And um, so I think we need to be careful. I know of one resident. Who hasn't been out her front door since this has occurred. And um, it's a scary situation for many of our older residents. And I just want to say, let's be sensitive about this. And I think we do need to have some type of a meeting that we were going to have with our yearly meeting. Even if we have to have some type of a Zoom meeting. Where we can all get together to talk about the things like we did with Dr. Tom. I think that's a very important meeting for us to sit down and, you know, try to do that. We might have to do it. Uh, online, but I think that we should try to do some type of a meeting. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, I still, I have two other questions. I might as well get my questions in now. That are really.
We're going to have reports if you want.
No, I don't need a report. Oh, okay.
We're going to do reports. Go ahead and do your question. Then you don't get to give a report.
Off the topic. I just have two off the topic. I'll wait.
No, it's, it's off the topic. Yes, let's wait until you report. Go ahead, uh, Ms. Callum, then we can close this out maybe.
Um, yes, I I agree with uh, Councilman Morrison on, do we really need to be under this emergency, um, civil emergency? Uh, state we're in right now. Um, I think that we, with following the CDC uh, recommendations, um. What, what, what's the thoughts of the other council on being under this civil emergency? Can we get out of that and just go about the business of the city? I think the budget is really important, the special meeting um, that we could have. Cause we're not having the retreat. I think that's really important. But I don't think that um, that we need to be under the civil emergency anymore. That's my thoughts. And I just wanted to see what the other councilmen, council people say about.
I, I personally, uh, uh, Mr. Brown, you got your hand. Go ahead.
Okay, no, I. I think we can't move too quickly. We can't move too quickly on this. I think we're talking about, we're talking about serious issues and um, death is forever. I just think that we need to take baby steps right now. And see how this goes, keep the status quo in place for right now. And and maybe two weeks from now, make another decision, see what's going on. That's it.
Ms. Callum, you're through?
Um.
You'll be back.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying open up the, you know, open up the government. I'm just saying. Couldn't we as a council run the city right now without the civil? Um, emergency that we're under? Do we need to still be under that? Um, as far as policymaking and moving ahead, you know, we still, the. We still have social distancing, we still have the stay-at-home order in place, but we, do we need the civil emergency on top of all that as well?
Okay, Ms. Callum or, I mean, Ms. Raymond, Mr. Morrison, you have anything or Ms. Raymond, either one? If not, we'll put an answer to this, I guess. Mr. Gargadisi. Are you on board?
Yep, yes, Mayor.
Okay, uh, we're talking about opening the city back up and maintaining whatever six-foot distances and so forth. Are we compelled to stay under the governor's orders until he opens the state and tells? The cities to do it upon themselves? I know there's talk about he's going to open it up and let. The cities do it themselves, but do we have to wait till he says? To go ahead and move forward?
If, if the question is, is the city still subject to the governor's executive order, emergency executive orders, the answer to that question is yes. The state of emergency declared by the governor is effective until, until April thirtieth. Um, twenty twenty unless otherwise extended by the governor. So regardless of what the city council does regarding its local emergency, the state emergency. Shall still be in place until, till the governor says otherwise. In addition, the city is also subject to, I believe, Brevard County's emergency order, because the county is under. Um, a, a complete um, declaration of emergency as well. So, you know, the city council's resolution and your previous executive uh, emergency declaration. Were all predicated upon the state's emergency power or uh, the, the state's emergency order and the county's. So, you know, that predicate still exists today. So, you know, if you wanted to go ahead and and lift the, the local emergency. Um, it's really form over substance because you're still going to be subject to state and county emergency.
I'm going to have a teleconference with the mayors. Uh. I don't, I don't particularly want to step out of the box on anything until. The county would at least lift theirs. That would kind of give me a little help on decisions. And also, we're going to have a teleconference with all the mayors uh. Thursday, Thursday afternoon. And at that time, I'm sure that will be discussed because I see other. Other mayor, uh, all that follows suit. And I know some of them are standing strong on, on a lot of issues that we're. We, we were the only ones that left our beach open and now everybody else is following suit on that down the line. Basically the same regulations we put forth to start with, so. I, I don't think we made a bad decision there, but I don't want to make a bad decision on lifting this thing too early until. We see what everybody else is going to do. Yeah, I'd like to be the leader, but I don't want to be the one that have to answer to the governor. So, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to stand pat on it. It's a, it's a good thing to do, I think. But let's do it like Mr. Brown says, in a safe manner and. I want to be right. I don't want to, I don't want to do a knee-jerk thing and just lift this to get everything kicked and going and. And then have a letter from the governor to come to Tallahassee and have a talk. I don't want to be doing that. So that's the position I'm in and I, I, I will stand pat on. Leaving it the way it is until we see how this thing goes. I, I hope by the end of the month it's over, it's coming to a close and starting to flatline a little bit. And as you say. There's only a couple of cases in Cape Canaveral, so we're lucky. I don't want to, I don't want to have to be. The front runner on that leaderboard that the county puts out every day that we got the most cases, so let's don't jump the gun too quick. All I have to say on this.
And just the final comments on it was, if we would be under the county and obviously the state emergencies. That, so I don't think a whole lot changes by lifting ours, but there's one thing for sure. I think we all want to be out of this state of emergency for the right reasons and I, not a knee-jerk reaction.
No, no.
And, and to have it lifted or for us to make a statement that says, hey. We're, we're going to step out, but we know we can step right back in as we're working towards the end of the month. Verbally, whether we do it formally or not, I think is the right move. And I would encourage you, Mr. Mayor, when you do talk. To the, the mayors is let them know that, you know, we were right once, you know, we want to get done with this at the end of, you know. Consistent with the, the, the governor, if he does not extend, I think we could all agree. We'll, we'll all be ready to move at that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I'd just say, I don't want to be, I don't want to be going to Tallahassee and talking to.
That's why you get a meeting with him. I'm sure we could do with a long list.
I'd like to have a meeting with him, but not for that reason. Anyway, uh, that kind of brings it to a close and. I want to ask the council, I don't, uh, I'm going to go back to our organizer and see, uh. If we have anybody that wants to talk about anything before we close out the meeting. That we'll go to our reports, of course, or I don't know how much more you have to report than what we've already had, but we'll have reports, but. I know Mrs. Raymond has a couple of issues that she wants to talk about, so. But first of all, I want to go to, back to Mr. Organizer. Dan, do we have anybody? In public that has a hand up and wants to talk about anything?
Uh, ye- yes, sir. We have two hands raised at the moment. I'll go to the first one. Uh, Felicity McDonald, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You're going to be live. Just start with your uh, name and address and you'll have three minutes. You're live.
Hi, yes, thanks. Felicity McDonald, three one nine Adams Avenue, Cape Canaveral. I wanted to talk a little bit for a second about the pop-up signs. So, um, or just any signs for that matter. I am. I find that pop-up signs. Tend to get placed in the wrong places and I don't think that people really adhere. Um, replacing them diligently. So. I've been where, you know, those feathered signs were up, I was coming out of Addison one day. And I couldn't for the life of me see where the traffic, because I had to edge forward into busy traffic. And I didn't want to do, go that far. So I get really frustrated when people who are putting up signs like that. Don't pay proper attention and, and I, frankly, I don't like. Pop-up signs and signs that aren't permanent because that means people can move them or they get blown over and. So I just wanted to say that about my personal experience with signs. Um, so if, if we are going to allow signs like that, they should be like. Si, they should only start at the six-foot point, right? So that if they do put them in the wrong place, it doesn't block my, my view of oncoming traffic. And, and then just was relating to electronic signs, um. I, I mean, I, I one time was driving down in um, Orlando and there was an electronic sign that was on the side of the road that was so blind. I mean, so bright, it blinded me. It was like daylight LEDs all over the whole little. Six by four sign. It was, it was, it was awful. And so. Whenever somebody says, oh, electronic signs, we should allow them, I think they, they really. There's so many different options with them. You need to be super careful if you do allow that. Now, I'm fine for emergency signs and, you know, stuff like that, but. People can abuse something like an electronic sign, so. I just wanted to mention that. And then I wanted to mention that I'm supportive of reducing taxes for businesses. Um, right now for this period of the um, COVID nineteen, so. Obviously, you know, any fees or things that were late from before, they, they don't count, but. From a certain period, like maybe March the first to whenever this is over, for that period, I think that. A very specific um. Red, reduction would be, I think, really helpful to the Cape Canaveral businesses. So that was all I wanted to say. Thanks for the meeting. I know it's kind of hard on everybody to do it this way. But I appreciate council meeting and um. And I'd hate to see us not have meetings for an extended period, just while we wait till we get back together in person. So thanks for putting this together.
Thank you, man, for your comments. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our second hand. I believe you said you had two, Daniel?
Yes, sir. The second hand is Canaveral Fire Rescue Chief Dave Sargent. Hold on one, one second while I unmute. Chief Sergeant, you're live.
Um, I just wanted to point out, if you lift the civil emergency, we need to keep it in place as long as possible. Because that's what makes us eligible for FEMA. And we want to keep that in place as long as possible. I think the counties might do it for us. But normally, the cities also have to do that. And as far as Todd Morley, um, you guys got a pretty good guy there. So, you know, go out and look and search. I think you're still going to come back to Todd. I've been here since eighty-two and I think you probably got a keeper. That's it.
Okay, Council, that, Mr. Mr. Organizer or Dan, do we have anybody else? Come in or any anybody we got to recognize, email or otherwise?
Uh, no other hands raised, and we're well past the deadline for email responses, so. Nobody else at this.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, Council, it's, that kind of ends our agenda. And we will adjourn our meeting after we have our reports. So we're gonna go ahead and give a report, if you have something to report. Start off with Mr. Brown.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the citizens of Cape Canaveral for the most part of following through on the social distancing. I think we're doing a good job. There are some issues in some places, but on the most part, I think the citizens are are following through and doing what they need to do. I think there is some light at the end of the tunnel. I think these days, hopefully, it passes, day two will pass. I know anybody that has kids and elderly, and everybody's going stir crazy. I talked to the president of the the Little League Baseball, and he's coming up with some things that maybe he can implement. So at a later date, they can get the kids out there, play with different rules, such as nobody in the dugout, no referee behind the kid. So hopefully, in the near future, we'll look at, look back and say, hey, we made it through these times. I just want to thank staff for everything they do. I know these are tough times, tough times for everybody, and thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cullen?
Um, yes, I would just like to thank the staff. I know they've gone above and beyond again, and they put wind up putting in more hours than they would if they were at City Hall, because there's a lot of things that happen continuously that they have to get emails and and everything out. They're doing a great job, and thank you through this tough time. Hopefully, we'll be over it soon. I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for the flowers at at the entrance of Harbor Heights. It looks awesome, very good, and Wagner Park is looking good. And I had a question about Wagner Park West, and maybe Todd, I forgot to ask you this today. Is that part of Wagner Park West? Is that it's on the other side of the street in front of the trailer park? Is that, because I looked on the property appraiser, and it doesn't show that we own that little piece of land there. Can you help with that, Todd?
Sure, I'll be glad to answer that. That was part of the deal of us acquiring the Wagner Park property was that the the owner, Bruce Wagner, very graciously agreed to give us that piece of property on the east side. And one of the things that we we did in exchange was we entered into an easement agreement with Mr. Wagner for the west side. And that easement agreement was specifically for the creation of a green space area that would be created, maintained by the city to beautify the front entrance of that park. So yes, you're correct that we do not own that, and we are, we are obligated to maintain it as a beautiful green space. I think the public will consider it to be Wagner Park West, but truly, it is under different ownership.
Okay, and then I wanted to thank the citizens of the city for doing a good job of social distancing, like Councilman Brown said, and and also, we have citizens that are getting together boxes of food for people that need help, and they're doing that on their own, which is awesome. We have a great city and great citizens, and I would like to thank everybody. And then first responders who do an awesome job. There was a fire last week or whatever they responded to and did a good job, and Dave Sargent does an awesome job. And also, over in the middle of all this, I lost my brother, and they responded to my house and tried to save his life, but it wasn't successful, but I wanted to publicly thank them for their hard work. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Cullen, our heart goes out to you. I know this has been very challenging times, and thank you for staying strong and showing up. COVID's enough. I can't imagine that extra layer you're going through, so hearts go out to you and your family. And to to all of the council, heart goes out to all of you, and thank y'all for for sticking through it. I know that Wall Street Journal or one of them was writing about how, goes sharing with Todd today, how council meetings are just not getting done virtually. It's chaos. There's people doing what they call Zoom bombing. They're coming on and interrupting the meetings, and there's these little cracks where people are getting through, and that's really a testament to staff's hard work to, it's not as open as I think we'd all like for it to be, but I heard today that we're working towards making public access there. And so thank you, council and staff, for working hard to keep this going. And for those of you who don't know how, Chief Sergeant, you said nineteen eighty two. I knew immediately how many years that was. That's thirty seven years, because that's the year I was born. So you're welcome, no, but let's see.
It's like how old that makes Dave if he's the chief. He's an old guy.
So many cool things are happening. The virtual art show, Molly and Stav, I mean, that is just such a cool idea to not let these types of events step back and to still get the recognition there in in the public. I do want to just plant a seed and to say, these virtual meetings, at some point, I would like to get involved in the policy on that and how we might want to consider just using this as a flexibility for the different types of meetings moving forward. We now, if we do the policy on this right, I think we can, you know, if we have a meeting that we don't feel is a substantial issue, like declaring a state of emergency, now we can think about writing in our ordinances, and this might be something Anthony and Todd, you guys have already worked on, on how we want to do virtual meetings, and I do think we'll obviously get into, you know, defining this type of emergency opposed to the other civil emergencies that are more acute. But I never did give a shout out and a thanks to, we brought it up last time, but the the Beachwave family in Moschol for they donated two thousand, I think, hand sanitizers to the city, and then also he donated and his team there worked together to not only donate them, but to stuff them in the bags, and our staff got involved and helped with that, but also donated two thousand to the city of Cocoa Beach. So just our neighbors here were well equipped with, for the most part, getting access to to stay healthy. And shout out to Zach as well, who helped with that, and Lisa and Dave and just everyone who was involved, and most importantly, thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor, for your kind words on that. That was a really cool event that I think could have made the front page of the paper. You saw it in other communities, and I'm thinking the unsung heroes, as our city manager said today, that that really happy about. And then the 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 last one, just on a report, I really want to, these short term vacation rentals that are haunting some cities, some neighborhoods. Cape Canaveral, you know, we got a seven day minimum here, and while we haven't been preempted, I think, yet by the state, I think we've been involved in some emails here lately, and I hope that we can get to a point to where I don't fully understand what the what our process is administratively, and so Todd, maybe when you get with the team to come back and report on how we're proactively looking at these short term rentals. Personally, I've used Airbnb, that firm. When I've gone to other places, I'm not bashing that, but I think we're all a firm believer that when you have a law, when that's that's seven day minimum, minimum, I know for a fact is not being honored by by homes here in Cape Canaveral. Whether I like it that or not is besides the point. That's our law, and so I hope that whether it's a function of code enforcement of the police, that when we're knocking on the door, if this is lawful, that we're asking the question, and if this is allowed, how long have you stayed here? And I think that if that if that question would have been asked by a recent interaction, there would have only been one answer that would have came back, because they're neighbors, they're right here, and we see it happening, and it's happening. To go on Airbnb, I think there's three hundred, three hundred properties listed in Cape Canaveral as vacation rentals, and so those are the ones that take our police resources. They take our code enforcement resources. We go out to the site, and it's just a liability, and it's, you know, some of those fines. I I I'm a big fan of warning at least once, but I think that we're we got a blind spot there in our city, and I hope that especially during COVID, that to violate that right now, you know, you see tags from out of state, that gives a lot of our locals heartburn, and so I've gotten a lot of emails, and I said that I would speak up on this. Reports was the best point is to get councils consensus that we can learn and maybe look at being more proactive at going after these vacation rentals who are just blatantly violating our seven day minimum ordinance. Some of them are advertising that you can park in the streets in Cape Canaveral, that's clearly not allowed, and that's not the people's fault who come here. That's the folks and so just puts pressure on our resources, and I know we all might stand different on whether agree with them or not, but within our ordinances, I've got faith in Todd that you can lead this, but I, before directing or anything, I did want to move that make a motion here in the reports that that to see if council would be willing to have staff come back with a, you know, a a proact, just what is the plan? What's the administrative process for for pursuing the these? And if there's not one really ironed out today, that's okay. Just moving forward, if council agrees, go look at the site, three hundred in Cape Canaveral, that I think there's a lot of them not doing seven day minimums. So that'll take a lot of pressure off, especially during COVID. Thank you. I did not want to end on a negative note. I think it's an opportunity, but I really saw some incident incidents happen this week that it just didn't sit right. It didn't make sense to me, and I hope that we can get better.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the city, the staff, and the council, the mayor. I think we've done a good job during this emergency. I'm very proud of our residents for being respectful and responsible. And I think that we're going to get through it just fine, and I think one of the things about closing the beach parking has to do with keeping non residents away from our residents for security reasons. So far, so good with most of the people in Cape Canaveral, and we want to keep it that way. That's why I say no rushing. Anyway, now getting back, I'm still on the board for Space Coast League of Cities, and I'm in contact with Yvonne Minus, who is the president. And I am on the Transportation Policy Committee again. You know, my interest is in affordable housing, and I think we need to look at that once again in our city. And of course, we want to get our A one A taken care of. That's very important for me. It's been a real joy to have no traffic along A one A. I can actually cross the street without getting killed every day. So there's a silver lining in this emergency. Also, the bike riding. I really have enjoyed bike riding every day, and many of our residents are out. I see more and more bicyclists every day. And that's one way that I kind of watch and see what's going on around town. Now, my two really important questions. When are we going to dig for the multigenerational center? That's question number one. And question two, who won the mayor's fitness challenge? I have emailed Keith Heinle at United Way to try to figure out if we actually made it or not this year, and I'm dying to know, and other residents are too. And I'm so proud of our residents, because they were out there walking, biking, jogging, playing tennis, surfing, swimming. And I really do think it's a great thing, because I want to be the most fit city in Brevard County. Thank you.
Okay. My report is not very little, other than a couple items. I'll tell you for a steak dinner about the about the fitness challenge there, Mickey, I mean, Angela?
Excuse me, I'll go buy the steaks tomorrow.
All right, you're on. I'll tell you what I know about it, nothing. You owe me the steak. But, okay, oh, seriously, I haven't heard a word. I don't know if it's out publicly, maybe Todd knows or somebody does, but we'll go into that when we get to their report. As far as the air bugs, yeah, we got four or five right on my street and one next door to me that constantly is a new car every day almost. But it's ceased now with this with this edict in place by the governor of no tourism. But I know we did have a serious problem on Ridgewood Avenue. And I did have a couple times up on the end of my street, up on the other end, there's there's a there's like five air bugs, six, seven or so, right in, right in that four hundred block. They're all right there. I think there's two brand new ones, and I don't know if these are all registered in the state or not, but we need to look into these type of things, and it's hard to police, and it's even going to get harder, because we can't regulate them anymore, so. It's a, it's a windfall. It's something that the cities had in their ordinances ever since day one, is rental by the by the week at a minimum. That's why we wound up with with air bugs. Yeah, it was, it was from tremendous battle, you might say, that went for that ordinance. But you had to allow them because of the new ordinance. But it's gotten out of hand with no control. State's gonna, the state's gonna take care of it? Yeah, that's a joke. They can't take care of what they gotta do. Anyway, as public, I said it publicly, and I mean it, because, you know, they don't regulate what they're gonna do. They don't, they probably can't even tell you half of them are in the city. They're not, they're not licensed, or they're gonna come down here, and you can complain, and then I'm sure there's been some complaints lodged with that one, and I know there was some discussion between the the state and the city staff, or one of the people was involved with that, but I don't have too much to report on, other than a couple items that was bumped out there, so. I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Morley and Mr. Garganese and anybody on staff that has anything to report. You're not muted, you're muted, Todd.
Thank you, Bob. I want to report that we are working cooperatively with the city of Cocoa Beach on a business relaunch initiative that will, we have staff from both cities working on a campaign to reach out to our businesses, so that when the time is right, that we can really push the these, what's what's going on with our businesses, what their status is, that both cities will be doing that across the board for all of our businesses. So, because we know we get a lot of people from Cocoa Beach up here, and likewise, they get a lot of people from here down there. Also included in that is the unincorporated area, No Man's Land, Yvonne by the Sea there. Talked to Chris Lober about that, and he's in the full support of that, too. So we're preparing for that day when we can relaunch our businesses and help them out with that. And I also wanted to say that I don't have any official word on the mayor's fitness challenge, Angela, I'm sorry. We're we're all waiting to hear the official word on that, so. And and thank you to everyone for all the nice comments and the compliments, the confidence you have in me. Thank you.
Mr. Esparr?
Um, no, no report, Mayor.
Okay, I don't know if anybody else out there has anything that they want to add before we close. Staff?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Cullen? One time.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Todd about that public participation comment we had on the baseball parking at the baseball field. Is there a way we can get barricades there? Parking at the baseball field. Is there a way we can get barricades there?
We haven't closed parking at our public parks. Our city parks are still open. Um, the, the movement to close the beach parking is to signal to people coming to our area that, uh, we. We really don't want people trying to look to park here. Obviously that's not going to one hundred percent solve that. Um, and, and I think that person, um, was also, also referenced and referenced something in the line of, uh. Uh, a quarantine, that's not the word he used, but we're, we're truly not under a quarantine. We're under a safer home advisory. Where people are still, um, allowed to do authorized essential activities such as walking, biking and jogging, uh, and if we, if we take away the places to do that, then we. We're technically, um, not helping that, we're hurting that, that, uh, essential activity. Places for people to do those things. So the parking on the beach is what we did to help try to. Reduce the amount of people coming in. It has happened. You've seen the, the beach tabs that I put out there each week and weekend. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department for that. But, um, at this point, we have not had, um, any direction to close our park, parking. The effect of that would be that people wouldn't be able to go to our parks and use our parks, so I think we need to think carefully about that. Yes, people are parking there, but they're also parking in other places. Um, because if there's four hundred people on the beach, you know, there's probably. At least a hundred fifty, two hundred cars that represent those four hundred people and there's more. Parking than going on than we're seeing. Uh, for instance, we know of some that has happened in the right of way. Some have got warnings, some have gotten tickets. Uh, we have heard some reports about people parking on vacant lots. Uh, in the area that's technically trespassing, but without a trespass, um, after day, but there's nothing that we could do to, to ticket against that. So what I'm saying is I think people are gonna find places to park. Um, and there's, it's a double edged sword if you close the, the park, parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Last comment. We'll close the meeting otherwise. Meeting adjourned.
Bye, thank y'all.
Daniel, are you on board yet?